I'd like to reconvene our meeting and start an open session. Would you stand please for the plate? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one item to record out of the closed session tonight. On motion by Member Brown and seconded by Member Wood and by a vote of five, by vote, the Board of Education voted to approve the readmittance of student case number 01201701 pursuant to Ed. Code Section 48900A1 and 48900K. The motion to adopt our identity is submitted. Are there any changes or additions to this?
No.
All in favor of the agenda as presented. Aye. Opposed, here's five oh. Our first item tonight, we have several reputations, and the district, our first reputation is the LBHS Gold Ribbon Reputation.
Well, good evening. President Vickers, members of the board, Dr. Gloria, members of the cabinet, and assembled guests, thanks for this opportunity. For us, the Gold Ribbon story is really the story of blended chemistry. It's really a great story. I wanted to talk about this from a problem-solving perspective. It kind of grew out of a problem. Blended chemistry was born out of a solution to a master scheduling dilemma. Two years ago, a fairly substantial number of students were looking to drop out of their honors chemistry that semester and to take the regular chemistry class. At that time, the regular chemistry class was, let's say, less rigorous than the honors chem. So we're faced with some options. Do we want to add a section of regular chemistry? Do we need to close a section of honors chemistry? And if we do that, how many students would need mid-year schedule changes to balance those schedules? It would have been sixty, seventy, eighty disruptions. So we got the teachers and the counselors and administrators talked about options. Teachers said the students can do it. They're not failing miserably. Most are getting Cs or Ds. If they go to regular chemistry, they'll be so far behind, they'll lose out. The mission statement says maximizing learning for every student. Teachers Parter Perkins and Steve Sogo suggested, let's keep them in place and just layer in the regular chemistry. We can simply differentiate the level of sophistication required on tests, quizzes, and labs, but they can still do the same curriculum. It won't be disruptive to anybody. So after going through some details, that's what we did. The subsequent year, we had two new chemistry teachers, so we did not discuss this option as a full-time program. But for this year, the teachers wanted to do it. So for me, this was an easy selection for the Gold Ribbon application. It hit two categories. It hit STEM and it hit closing the achievement gap. Our application was accepted, and a validation team came to confirm our claims. They visited classes, spoke with students, met with parents and staff, and confirmed that indeed, this approach was worthy of recognition. I want to thank Dr. Odepo and Dr. Gloria for giving the nudge to apply. I'd like to thank Carol Normandin for attending the banquet with us the other night and for her presence there. Kenneth Brown and Jan Vickers for being present during the visit. And mostly, I'd like to thank these three teachers here who work hours and hours after school every day to adjust lessons, create videos to supplement learning, calibrate their practices to deliver a high-level curriculum for all chemistry students, which is ultimately about ninety percent of our students. They've established a practice worthy of emulating Jennifer Yu, Alexandra Holtz, and Steve Sogo. And again, two nifty little plaques, which I will show off and maybe we'll pose with for a picture. This one from the state. You hold one of those. Or you hold one of those. And then this one from the counter.
Alright.
So there you go. You guys hold that.
Alright.
I'll pose for a picture.
Right, great, one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one thing to you all. I sat in with the parent group when they were in the parents. And to a person, they are so impressed. The kids who are in honors, the kids who think they're in honors, and the kids who aren't. And it is such a genius move. I really, I wish my kids had been able to experience it because I think, I mean, you know my kids.
Yes.
I think it would have worked so, so well for them. So I just want to thank you guys for taking the initiative, moving ahead, and maximizing learning. I just think, I truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate that. Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I sat in on the student group, and I was really impressed with their comments, and it really has made a difference for them. And it was great to hear them, and I think they really impressed the visitors over here to examine the program.
And that's the bottom line.
Next up, we have the CSBA Service Award.
Alright, so Dr. Gloria and President Vickers, if you could join me in recognizing those folks today. So we're here today to recognize and congratulate our Years of Service Honorees and our Employees of the Year. So first of all, please welcome me in recognizing Hallie Davidson from TOW for earning the distinction of Teacher of the Year for Laguna Beach Unified School District. And I'm going to ask Hallie's Principal Mike Conlon to come up and share a few words.
She's not one that, you know, is spotlighted.
You're sharing this.
Yes, I'm sharing it. No, I couldn't have thought of a more deserving teacher than Hallie for this honor as the Teacher of the Year for Laguna Beach. She exemplifies everything that is great about teaching. It's probably honestly the best classroom to go into. There's nothing more exciting than going into a class and a lot of you can attest. It's just a feeling you get when you go into the room. There's such an energy. The students are passionate about what they're doing. They love and work so tirelessly for you. You can tell they're challenged, so it's just, it's a magical learning environment. And I think the biggest piece, the best story I can share about Hallie, she's so creative, and when she puts her mind to it, she will not stop until she gets it done. We had just had a training on, I think it was fact-wise for math. And they talked about how it's, you know, using Abacus in the classroom would be an incredible way to kind of really have a tactile, hands-on learning for the students. And she's like, Mike, can we, do we can order? Yeah, we'll look into it, we'll order it. And she came back, I think it was a Friday, came back on Monday morning and had built Abacus for her classroom, you know, just, and it was amazing. Like I said, just one small example of the dedication to her job and to her students that she comes to school with on a daily basis. And we are blessed, and there are countless students that have been blessed to have you as a teacher. And we truly appreciate your efforts and your service, and you're incredible.
And I've been blessed to work in the best place in the world. People at top of the world always say, if you're lucky enough to work in Laguna Beach, you're lucky enough. And that's, I've thought that for twenty-three years and continue to think it. Lucky to be here, lucky for great parents, lucky for great students, lucky for great colleagues. I feel a little intimidated by this award because when I look around and see all the great things that are happening here, I'm impressed. So it's an honor to be honored. Thank you. Me to introduce, this is my husband, Tom Davidson, and my mom and dad, John and Kathy McNamara. Thank you.
So in recognition, one thing that I had mentioned to Hallie coming to her class, I came there, actually Jeff and I tried to visit there the other day. I think the kids were out to pee or something to that effect. But I always show off her room because she has created, as Mike said, she creates. So she got stadium seating.
Yeah.
That's awesome. And I showed Jeff. And it's really cool because the way she reconfigures her classroom. And she, I would say, without the four CLE furniture that we have in many of our classrooms, she doesn't have that in her classroom, but she has created that environment herself by doing the things that she does. So I'm always so impressed, and I thank you for your service. I really do. Thank you.
Can I say one kid? I'm sorry, I have a lot to say. We were in the same class. I came twenty-three years ago too. So, yeah, so, but Annie, I was lucky enough to be one of your parents. And you are a remarkable, remarkable educator. It was a one-two combo. Nobody ever wants to be in a combo class. You wouldn't have known. It was one of the best years, second grade, that Annie ever had, and she still remembers it. And I also can attest to your creativity since I got a, my, thank you for reading, for Read Across America. I will keep that forever. I sent, I had Kathy look at it when she came home. I, it means so much to me. So thank you, thank you, thank you for thinking outside yourself and outside your classroom. You make a difference to everybody's life.
And just to give credit where credit is due, I do have to say, I would love to take credit for that, but my students started talking as soon as you left about their own pages in that book. And they had.
Then we should do one of the others.
We like, just, like, should we do it now? And they were like, yes! Okay, we're doing it now!
We can still recite all the poetry my daughters learned in her class. We do it. As a senior in high school, we were doing the flowers in the garden the other day.
Mom, did you hear that?
Yeah.
That's my grandma. Oh, we're so excited.
Oh, that's sweet! Says we're all doing personal walls.
Yeah.
So, you know, as the kids rearrange their walls each year and take stuff off, more notes to my kids are still on their walls. And, you know, Josh wants to prove you wrong on your note, but...
It was very positive notes. That's the relationship that you have.
Where are we going with this? Because I can tell Halloween came, so...
You can get some memoir you wrote.
Yeah, and one day I'll get to brag that you're on stage, or something. Whatever it was. Like, some very sweet thing, but the fact that they have the notes and that it means something, or not taking it down each year, and they recite the poetry, and they talk about, it wasn't stadium seating, but you had a way they sat or something, like, maybe it was. Maybe you have lost stadium seating.
Yes.
Yeah. And they talk about that. And then when we popped in your room, you were like, you're doing stuff that we were just talking about might be starting or looking for, and there you are, right, starting it and doing it. But you were, you touched...
Yeah, and you touched the drawing, too, you guys. And you touched it, right?
Thank you, it's been a long...
I guess I better say something. I didn't bring the kids in Hallie's class, but she was a colleague, and her creativity off the charts. I mean, you'd go in a room one year and it was a castle. Next year, it was a castle. Next year, it was something else. And she always had ideas for everything. She was fabulous to work with.
Thank you. Enjoy working here.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, that's very good. Well, she was actually nominated for this honor by her peers at her school site, so that's one of the highest honors that you can receive. Next, please join me in recognizing Debbie Nash, who works here at the district office for earning the distinction of Classified Employee of the Year for Laguna Beach Unified School District. And I will ask...
Wow, honestly, if I did love my husband so much, I would marry her. I have the honor of working... I have had the privilege and honor of working with Debbie Nash for approximately eleven years. Her role has been reclassified multiple times due to additions in her responsibilities as a result of growing needs within the department. In a small district like Laguna, we all know that we wear many hats, and that includes Mrs. Nash. She serves numerous roles, including secretary, fiscal analyst, program specialist, contract writer, just to name a few. As you can imagine, Mrs. Nash's bulk called upon frequently by school staff to answer questions and connect with parents, not to mention meet the needs that I have in order to get our work done. I believe that she has been a true partner in really shaping our special education department in the last ten years, and we have services that we are both, along with our team, incredibly proud of. We work really hard to blur the lines within special education, and certainly behind the scenes, Debbie has just been a critical player in making all that happen. I could not have ever imagined coming to Laguna and working with a better partner. And she's amazing, and honestly, she guides and leads every single day. She's the true backbone of our department, and I love to do it.
My son and his girlfriend are here. My husband's in Brazil on a business trip. So Callan is over there. He graduated in 2013 from here. Woo-hoo! Caitlin is sitting right there, and she graduated in 2012.
We're gonna take a picture.
Can I say something?
Hold on, hold on.
So Debbie, I also, when people are calling to find Irene, and they're not always, sometimes they're struggling, they're either... It's so nice to have them, to answer, to guide, and to listen for the tenants while they're trying to figure out what they really want to tell Irene.
Right.
Right. And so, the fact that you do that goes with the problem you have. And it's great here. Thank you.
I don't feel calm most of the time. If you know me, I'm not calm inside, just, and then you're on the outside.
It comes across in the outside.
It does.
Well, Debbie and I mean, both kind of managed, in the midst of the chaos of the year, we're at just the best of sports. We relocated and out of their offices here, down into the Instructional Services Office, basically, you know, made them a new space, which I believe is a good home now, and I think they're excited to be there. But in the process, it was, you know, it was a challenge, and they both were there, and I know they've even made it even a better place. I walked down there, and I think somebody's planted some plants out front. You know, because when she has the door open, it's a good thing to see when you're looking out the door. And she makes, Debbie's done a nice job making this place feel like home for, I know, parents who come in, and I know staff who work with her, and I'm just so appreciative of that. You go out of your way, I think, to make people feel that way. So thank you for everything.
It was nice that my peers nominated me.
Yes.
I never feel deserving of it, but since they voted for me, I have to just accept it. Or accept, but thank you all. You are deserved.
I don't know if I'm really allowed to say anything, but as one of the teachers that works with Debbie, I just can't even say that. Because we often say that we would all leave if Irene wasn't there enough help, and Irene would have left a long time ago. And she keeps everything calm, and she never gets mad at us. She's always so calm about it. Everything gets it back to us and all our craziness. So thank you so much, you really keep it moving forward. Thank you.
I love working with you.
Very kind.
Thank you.
So also as part of the classified program, honorees receive nominations from their colleagues and supervisors, as Debbie just mentioned, based on their work performance, school community involvement, and leadership and commitment. So we want to honor all of our 2017 Classified Employees of the Year. The classified program has nominees in each category, so we can recognize across the board. So first, we have from the Child Nutrition category, Tammy Cloward from El Moro, who's a...
Thank you.
Do you have any family?
No, I didn't bring you to it.
For all your family, yes. Next, from the Maintenance and Operations category, we have Roger Fernandez from Thurston Middle School.
And we know you.
I saw my wife, my daughter, and my daughter's husband were here with me.
Alright, and from the Paraeducator and Instructional Assistant category, we have Agnes McManus from El Moro.
This is nice, thank you.
Thank you, very, very kind.
No, they're across the street. My son is playing volleyball.
Thank you.
From the Support Services category, we have Mark Harris from Laguna Beach High School, Campus Supervisor. So we also usually take this time to recognize our classified employees who provided many years of dedicated service to the district. And so this is our eighth annual recognition, and unfortunately, none of them were able to be here tonight. But we still would like to recognize them, and we'll be sending them their certificates. So with fifteen years of service, we have Mary Schoenfeld, who works here at the district office. Peter Roche, who works at the theater over at Laguna Beach High School. Roxanna Ward, who provides music instruction at both Thurston and Laguna Beach High School. And Beth Sand, who has twenty years of service at our elementary schools, providing music instruction. So we'll be providing, sending them their certificates and passing along our congratulations to them.
Jan, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Because I don't think, we always, I don't, I just don't think I can say thank you enough to you all. Roger, you used to be our bus driver. You know, I mean, the longevity and the importance that the classified gap has to the lifeblood of this place. We just, we really need to say thank you more often and with true conviction. So, thank you.
That is true. We always notice, but we don't always remember. Need your members to thank you. Thanks. Unseen heroes.
Unseen heroes, seen heroes.
And finishes our recognitions for tonight. Our next section is public comment for non-agenda items. So if you have a comment you wish to make on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, I don't have any of the blue cards for that, for anything that's not on agenda, but this is the time you need to speak to that. Then after, I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll move to reports. From, that is, our first is our student group.
Hi, I'm so currently at the high school. We have AP exams coming up, so second week, so finishing strong this week. We also have task testing from May twenty-second to June second, so it's approaching soon for juniors. And then we also had walk focus groups last Friday, and we tried to support that. And prom is this week, twentieth. And then our pep assembly is May nineteenth. And then we also have a week of wellness, which is going to be the week after prom, which is going to be music in the quad and just, and yoga and activities and just kind of nighting together before school gets out. And we also had our dance concert a little more, I think a couple weeks ago, a week ago. And then we also had a House of Rex meeting on April twenty-eighth. And then for our sports report. We have had a great spring sports season with every program improving throughout the year. Our softball team made great strikes this year, winning multiple games and getting back to a competitive level of league play. The girls' efforts were truly exemplary. Our baseball team is on the verge of another league championship with two games against Rival Estancia this week. The boys are attempting to complete an undefeated league season. Boys golf won the Orange County League Championship, and junior Kyle Sharp was the league champion. We plan the team playoffs one day. Our swim teams were again outstanding. Our boys lost their final league duel in nine years, but rallied to come back and win league finals, capture another league title, and our girls powered through the unscathed. We compete in the CIF swim finals in Riverside this weekend. Boys tennis finished league as the undefeated champions and played their first round CIF match at home tomorrow. Come on out and enjoy some good hype, school tennis. Our track team hosted league finals last week with our boys placing second and our girls winning the Orange Coast League Championship. We have many athletes competing in the CIF meet this weekend. Boys volleyball posted another undefeated league season and are playing a first-round CIF playoff game in Denver Gym tonight. Our girls' sand volleyball had an outstanding season that included adding a cross-staff team because of the number of talented girls wanting to play sand volleyball. Our girls' team won the Orange Coast League they participated in. Breaker Athletics is extremely thankful for the support shown to us by the entire LBHS community. Thank you.
So our students and teachers are busy and engaged, fluctuating between panic and relief that the school year is almost over. There's a lot left to be done. So I think everyone's focusing on trying to accomplish that and finish strong. Lufa is reaching out to meet individually with our board members, and we're hoping this month we'll be able to meet with each of them, and we'd like to continue that as a practice to have open dialogue throughout the year. And we appreciate the cooperative relationship that has always taken place. And as we move into negotiations, we are midway through and feel like it's been positive and productive, those negotiations.
Okay. Just funny to have a little friendly reminder that CSA is having our end-of-the-year meeting on June fourteenth, a little celebration of the Classified Employee of the Year again. And that will be on June fourteenth, and you are all invited. We're gonna have a little picnic and a big fiesta this time, so it'll be a little bit different.
Still being the Breeze, what was that, right?
They said we'll be on the little patio behind the main Laguna Beach High School office. So just, actually, about three thirty. So you'll be getting invitation as well. And then the negotiations will be happening tomorrow for CSA. And thank you very much. As to any representatives of organizations tonight's School Power Boosters PTA.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Bay, Laguna Beach Band Booster's president. Surprised, you didn't? The Laguna Beach High School band performed at the historic USS Missouri in Pearl Harbor, Hawaii over spring break. Led by director Jeremy Chung, the band played patriotic songs to honor those who have served in the US military, as well as those memorializing the site. Students also viewed the USS Arizona Memorial and toured the USS Oklahoma Memorial and museums dedicated to World War II heroes. The Thurston Middle School bands, under the direction of John Mann, had a wonderful spring band trip last weekend. They received first and second places in their divisions, and both groups received superior ratings. Mr. Mann said that the group displayed great behavior and citizenship all day and represented LBUSD very well. And the LBHS drumline made it to the 2017 American Drumline Association Championships, where they competed in the finals last, let's see, April twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth. All trips are made possible with the support of LBHS Band Boosters. Please save the dates for our spring instrumental music concerts to be held on the evenings of June sixth and seventh in the Artist Theater at Thorsten and High School respectively. Alright, and I am still Kathleen Bay. I'm council advocate for Laguna Beach Unified Council PTAs, supporting tonight for president Tammy Scandaria. The final Laguna Beach PTA Coffee Break event of the school year will be held next Wednesday evening, featuring John O'Sullivan, author of the number-one bestselling books, Changing the Game, The Parents Guide Race, and Happy, High Performing Athletes, and giving youth sports back to our kids, and so on, and, and why specialize. He'll be discussing his Changing the Game project to return youth sports to our children and put the play back in play-ball with us on Wednesday evening, May seventeenth, from six-thirty to eight o'clock at the Susie Q Center on Third Street. And finally, I am honored to announce that California State PTA selected the Laguna Beach Unified Council PTAs as the recipient of its 2017 Council Advocacy Award, which was presented onstage at the California State PTA Convention in San Jose on April twenty-ninth. Thank you to Laguna Beach High School teachers Mark Alvarez, Patrick Pollak, Jonathan Todd, to registrar Ellen Oxalis and principal Chris Hertzfeld for their efforts to ensure that LBH students graduate fully prepared to engage in their civic responsibilities as adult citizens. Thanks also to LBUSD's school board and administrators for your support of our civic engagement program, and to our Laguna Beach school PTA leaders for effectively communicating to our members about advocacy issues and the importance of civic participation. This kind of cooperative partnership between us all helps to ensure that high school students understand the vital role they play in society as they enter the adult world of civic responsibility, that parents know they can take action locally to make a difference in their own schools and community, and that we encourage meaningful voter participation, demonstrating that PTA is an advocacy leader and powerful voice for issues that support and protect the welfare of children and families. Together, our efforts will make a difference. Thank you.
Was Kathleen leaves out of that? It said, it was Kathleen's project, yes. And she did it, here we go. She did it as a pilot program, basically, in fourth district, and took it upon herself to take into our high school the packets so that students could register. and took it upon herself to take into our high school the packets so that students could register the vote. And that was last fall. So I mean, of all the timeliness of doing that, as that was certainly lively discussions in the classes anyway. But those history teachers and social science teachers joined into that project. And then it made such an impression that other districts were going to follow suit and also provide that information. And as what Kathleen said, it's really, it's really a function that we can serve as they leave high school to understand that they have, my opinion, a civic responsibility and obligation to be part of the voting system in this country. And so really, it was a great project and we spent a lot of time doing it and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much.
So we have wanted to back that up. Our PTA being recognized with that advocacy honor, Kathleen is the head of that.
And people like Kathleen, you make a difference in the lives of all our kids. So I want to say thank you. I know that you have had many years of continuing to do the work on behalf of our kids. And your role as relates to the fourth district advocacy and a larger group of kids, we thank you for that. This is just our little token to show appreciation from the, from the school board and myself.
Thanks, it's very kind of you. I so appreciate it. Thank you.
Especially that you wanted to go to circle me.
Thank you.
Hey, now we have comments from board members. And this time is the time when we report just on committees that we actually assigned to represent. And I looked at our schedule and I keep finding basically the community coalition, school power, and endowment. So we want to, does anybody have a lead on that? I mean, I could see that there were, there might be others I don't know about.
Okay. Because the meetings can be long, we did attend the coalition, we were looking at strategic realignment and how they can support the community at large, those who are interested. So that was, that was helpful and interesting conversations. And then I did attend the Golden River. Sure percent, yeah. Yeah, it was a very long, it was so nice to spend time with educators and do all the reasons they're there.
I did go, they didn't have an endowment, but Jeff and I had a lovely conversation outside, they're locked doors. And I did go to the regular school power district meeting and we were talking about the grants that they're, that they're, when are you going to do those?
I didn't make, uh, school power, yeah, she said for me.
The CSBA voted for us. And then also, as far as the community coalition, they always give us kind of up-to-date information on what's going on in the county. And I, they're having many more fatal overdoses by prescription drugs. There are two mission hospitals in, last year, there's many missions, I think there were, 2015, there were thirty overdoses, 2016, a hundred and sixty. So huge increase. Opana is a drug to really watch for, a painkiller mostly given to cancer patients. And what happens when the kids take it, it's long-acting, so they don't feel it right away, so they take another. And then it's very devastating. Also, the enrichment summer program, which is a collaboration between community services, the city, and Mission Hospital. They're having an internet safety and digital citizenship class for ages ten to thirteen, which will hit cyberbullying. And it's really put on by Nets, Martz, which, one of their main goals is to prevent students being snatched. So they're helping students with that. And on May twenty-fifth, there is the Awareness Day for Missing Children. So they're asking everyone to wear just one sock. So the sock is missing and make people more aware of that. When, this summer, when they have that class, the Church of Latter Day Saints offered us their parking. So parking won't be a problem. And at the Suzie Q, they continue with their tools for young people to deal with stress on Tuesday nights, six to seven thirty with Dr. Cooper. And the Dale Carnegie Master in Communication skills starts tomorrow and goes through.
Now, I attended the PTA council with all the representatives. And I just wanted to briefly report that we had Jesse Rothman present on the integrated science that's going to begin at Thurston. And really informative. And then we had Amy come in on an update on the math, and the math pathways. And letters that went out to the parents for the Catholic test. And it included the contracts that parents have to sign for taking, moving up to the dance classes.
Missing time, obviously came back from spring break. We had teacher appreciation week. I know that my, my child was doing a lot, both of my children actually started doing a lot of appreciating of the teachers. Yeah, I think the theme was superhero, I think, I talk of the world, for example. But again, appreciate all the work that our teachers do, and they, they out. And today was another great day to recognize the work that our teachers do. Promise that's not my car. I did attend the Golden River Award Dinner. And yes, it is a long day. They asked you to show up at one-thirty for pictures and it ends at eight-thirty. But as Carol mentioned, it's, it's a fun time just to be able to sit and actually hear some of the speakers, the Teacher of the Year from the state that goes around and actually speaks on many occasions. She was fantastic. And the superintendent was there as well in doing introductions. So a great night to honor the hard work and dedication of the staff and their ideas over at the high school. We had the Grapes of Grad, which is at Rotary. I know Keta was there volunteering and I think half of Laguna volunteers and then attends. But just special thanks to Rotary and that, and that work. I know it takes a lot of planning and a lot of those dollars go towards our student scholarships. So I appreciate that work. I did have an opportunity to tour Elcat most recently. Again, as we establish and enhance our community partnerships. And working with Bridget at the high school to find ways that our teachers can take advantage of some of their summer offerings that they offer for teachers. And so that'll be going out to some of our teachers who qualify potentially to take some of those classes. But it's, it's amazing how much they've expanded and how they continue to expand there. And they were able to go in and see a lot of the work that they've been doing as they've taken over different buildings, get into some of the classrooms actually and see some of the hands-on work they're doing. It's just so impressive to see something in our local community that I don't think is always discussed and talked about. And that's one area that I know they're continuing to look at and we're looking for, like, continued ways to partner with them. And last but not least, I did actually have a meeting with Marcy Mendick and at the community coalition, as a separate meeting than the regular community coalition meeting, to talk about, as we move forward, the action plan that they're going to be doing around their strategic plan and how we can continue to work together in order to enhance the, the community outreach that they are doing on what, what our role is and what we're trying to accomplish and what the community coalition does to support the overall community as a whole. So appreciative of the work that they do. And I know that that's on, I didn't consider this in these schools, but I'll keep it short.
Can I add the Teacher of the Year? Because I actually wrote down something she said. Just really quick. Was, Kathleen Bay, I'm making a thinking, Kathleen, was. So it says, she said, "I cannot think of a more perfect way to achieve a more perfect union than by teaching in an inclusive process."
Alicia?
Hi, so I'd like to acknowledge Dustin and Yadi, Dustin, Yadi, Rojas, for all of their work with finalizing our ELA/ELD adoptions. And to our other teachers who are here tonight to support that, we appreciate you. And our final day for our K-12 inch is this planning day wrapped up in April. Thank you for your support. But that Thurston is still underway and we'll continue with some additional days which I'm going to. So we're very grateful for your support. I'd like to acknowledge Irene, she put on a big air event down to build community and it was extraordinary. Lots of kids bouncing and having a wonderful time. But then we turned around to the mental health conference up in Sacramento, the first annual. So we're pleased to get to be a part of that. I do want to acknowledge our teachers, you are the heart of what we do, so thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing on waiver of education code three-seven-two-zero-two-A, the equity length of time requirement for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten programs. Is there any comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, I would close the public hearing. And then we move to our consent calendar. Are there items that board members wish to remove from the consent calendar? Quickly, hold the minutes, because I did not attend the last meeting. Any other items? And I need a motion to approve consent calendar items B through M. So, okay. Are there any certifications on that?
Okay, okay, we'll make a new relation. Well, Scott Law was actually skewed while on the, I said that.
Yeah, that was my checking.
All in favor, consent calendar presented.
Aye.
Aye, closed, carries by vote. And consent calendar item A, motion to approve the mass of April eleventh. Please send it to you, poll.
Okay.
Your motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Four in one, out abstention. Thank you. Next information items, and we have item fourteen, report on student survey results regarding athlete participation and requested parts for grants for middle and high school students.
Yes, I will ask that Lance, you look under the podium and he's going to do a brief update to the board and ask for some direction from the board related to survey results that we gathered most recently. So I'll pass off to Lance. Oh, no. I hadn't put a PowerPoint together in a long time, it's just taken way too long. Some of you are involved, I believe Peggy got the first email inquiring about the possibility of lacrosse, because we have some students coming in who are interested in playing lacrosse. Some of you probably know John Todd, our teacher who was talked about tonight. He actually has a son at St. Margaret's right now because we don't have lacrosse. So we started to look at our sixth through twelfth graders next year. And, and we checked interest in our sports we have. There's what we currently have. And we have lots of interests, which we already know, again, like sand volleyball this year. We had so much interest that we increased the team. But we also threw on there wrestling. Coming on more, wrestling and lacrosse. And so we, we basically got survey data back from about eighteen hundred students. The data was shocking. A hundred and seventy-nine boys expressed interest and a hundred and seventy-eight girls. If you had asked me going in upfront, I would have thought we would have had a lot more boys interested in lacrosse. But we had almost equal numbers. And then wrestling, we had about a hundred and twenty kids. And I, I, right now, I hadn't looked at that to break down, but there was definitely more boys, but there was some girls' interest. It's an interesting piece on that with the rise of MMA. Everybody knows that the MMA fighter's primary sport early on was wrestling. So people who are interested in that are interested in wrestling. And even girls at this point in time. When I was at Beckman High School, our actual first state champion was a girl who had done judo and then decided to wrestle. And at that point in time, that was like seven years ago, there were so many less girls wrestling than boys. It wasn't, I mean, it was difficult to win a state championship, but it wouldn't be like for a boy winning a state championship where there's thousands. But again, so increased importance for girls even. And if you've ever watched girls wrestle, it is a very empowering sport for young ladies. The other thing, if you've ever had kids wrestle, it's agonizing to watch. It's a very difficult one. I was a basketball player. My boys both ended up being wrestlers. And my, I still remember very vividly my oldest son going out in his first wrestling match. And it was a JV tournament and he was a freshman. And at that point in time, they didn't make you wear mouthpieces. So as he was coming off the mat, he was pulling his lips off of his braces. And he was pretty sure the guy tried to kill him. He became instantly a different young man for that experience. So if you've had kids who play team sports, when they go out in this individual sport, it, it is a different experience. And it, it fits in very well for some kids, not for others. As I was having a conversation, so Surbite High School, Alan Clint is their athletic director and he's a wrestling coach. And Surbite brought Alan in specifically to, to get their wrestling program up and going because they saw it as a valuable thing. And Alan was at El Medina and him and I were talking the other day. And Alan, it was interesting, he said, you know, I had the best luck getting surfers to wrestle because they're used to doing an individual sport where they're in front of people, surfer, surf in the morning. And so they didn't have a conflict in the afternoon. That was another piece that I wasn't expecting as I was, I was going through the data. So you can see, our fall slate wouldn't be affected at all. Wrestling, we're, we're, everybody's liking the winter. You have five sports and you have six if you got wrestling, that's what it is. And then in the spring, you're very busy already and you throw some more kids out there and you're already busy spring. So as we look at that, obviously, Title IX, we have to be providing for girls and boys the same. You know, what would the budget and the cost be for those two? We actually, when we just redid the stipends, we threw those stipend numbers in there just as a, hey, if this happens, let's look and see if it's even, would work within our stipend structure, facilities available within our district where we can do it. And then the impact on our current sports. So, you know, that's, I give thought to this stuff all the time because that's what I do. I was actually, when I was at Beckman Lacrosse, was just getting going. Foothill and Beckman were some of the first schools getting lacrosse up and going in Orange County. And then, you know, it's blossomed and then almost everybody in South Orange County, well, everybody in South Orange County other than us does have it now. And it's spreading its way north at this point in time. So with that being said, that's just kind of, you know, that was the initial data that came out. I talked to the superintendent and he said, come and present and let's see where we want to go with this, what other information you would like. So at this point in time, if anybody's got any questions, I can tell you what I know.
So it looks like, I was worried about the field because I didn't realize lacrosse was spring. So that means we, that, except for track.
So if I were, if I were to take a working model and Dr. Gloria just came from there. Irvine High has one field, so track practice as it's winding down, you can put some netting up and you can get going before it's completely over if you have the girls out there because they don't throw the ball as hard. So you, you know, you get track over about four and you put a girls' practice. This is where we get into a Title IX piece. You know, a lot of times you've got girls from four to six and then you would throw boys out there from six to eight. But if the boys' parents complain, you actually never win on the boys' side, but it would be appropriate of us to let the boys go early sometimes. We also have both elementary schools, I believe, that have adequate field space, you know, for practice, especially in the winter when we have soccer out there or lacrosse would want to get up and going. And I know we're talking about renovating Thurston and that is a, you know, a capable field space, so.
And wrestling is, oh, sorry, I will, Jason, that's not your fault, it's mine. You go ahead and do public comment. We're supposed to have our public comment before we ask our questions.
Okay.
And so I have two cards on lacrosse. One's on the school sports survey, which I assume is the same. So we have Joe Miller, speak on lacrosse.
Hi, Joe.
How you doing?
Good.
Hey, everybody, I'm Joe Miller, a longtime school district resident. I've got an eighth grade boy who plays lacrosse. He's played it for the last three years in club. We're probably going to send him to Santa Margarita. We'd love to have a local option. Love the sport, it's really fun to watch. It's growing, it's probably the fastest-growing boys' sport right now. I'd say that some people look at it and they see these guys with helmets and sticks. And it's not like, just because they have helmets, there's so much collision contact in the sport. It's more like hockey, it's more like incidental contact. But it's a nice combination of things for kids and I just came to voice my support. Thank you.
And Steve Rup?
Hey, my name is Steve Rup, new to the district in the last year. I've got an eighth grade boy, sixth grade girl, and a fourth grade boy. Tell you upfront, huge lacrosse fan, played for twenty-two years, coached for fourteen, coaching three different teams right now, not in Laguna. So excited to see the results of the survey. I do think it is a phenomenal women's sport, as well as being a great boys' sport. The teamwork, the leadership opportunities, the fitness opportunity. The average lacrosse player runs about six miles during the game, so it is a fantastic fitness opportunity. I am willing to volunteer my time if there's things to be researched and investigated. I know five, six different varsity head coaches, both in Northern California where we came from and down here. I'm the same situation as Joe. My eighth grader has played lacrosse for seven, eight years, wants to play in high school, wants to go to Santa Margarita because they've got a squad. So wish that wasn't the case, because we'd love to see him at the high school. But for my younger two, I'd love for this to be an option. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, so, field space and actually, I, to that point, I can't tell you how many people that I know personally who sent their kids out because we don't have lacrosse. And it looks like the wrestling actually would be a nice fit for the non-necessarily team sport if you still, if you still want to be involved. I, I just thank you for doing the survey and getting, I'm shocked. Yeah, great. But it doesn't, it doesn't seem like they'd be coaching necessarily.
So, the interesting piece, and again, like I said, I was at Beckman when we got up and going. Woodbridge started while I was going. You, you will have five or six kids that did track decide to do lacrosse. Our track teams are hundreds of kids.
Right, yes, yes.
So, it's, it's a minimal. What you, especially for us, what you would see as a reduction in our kids in off-season sports because there's another opportunity, football kids. When we did the surveys, football players are the ones who said then they would like to go wrestle. They're the ones who are going to play lacrosse. So, in my experience and what we've seen countywide, it hasn't had a major impact on other sports. You know, we are a little smaller, so we could see it a little bit more. But as you look at the data, mostly what they're taking people out of is our off-season sports.
I love the idea. I mean, if that many students are enthusiastic about it, I definitely think we should do that. But tell me how the Title IX will work.
Well, we'll have boys and girls in both, so there shouldn't be an issue. And again, that's where I was a little bit surprised by the boys and girls' interest, that makes it much easier.
But the wrestling.
So, wrestling, I mean, again, and Title IX is always interesting. And so, you guys know, we've run all the numbers, we have a hundred less girls in sport, we have a hundred girls in dance. I mean, that's, that's the difference. So, like, right now, if we were to look at cheer, we have two male cheerleaders and fourteen to sixteen girls. Wrestling would be the opposite of that. You know, we'd have fourteen to sixteen. It equals. Our numbers right now really are remarkably even when you look at the big picture of the whole thing. When you add dance and all of that, it's, it's really, it's right there. And we did work on the stipend piece to make sure we were exactly the same on the stipend piece. So, we, we have everything in alignment and it actually balances up pretty nicely.
I'd like to see a plan for implementing it for next year. For, because their response is so great, I think, I'm not sure how you all feel.
Was that, was it a K-12 or K-11?
Six twelve.
Twelve.
Especially that case, it's eleven.
Six.
Twelve.
Twelve next year, right?
Twelve next year.
So, we, so with those numbers, you're good, you're.
That'll carry it.
We, we could start, boys and girls lacrosse with one team next year. Wrestling is only fourteen weight classes and generally.
Only fourteen weight classes?
You know, that's another great one about wrestling. A kid who's tiny in every other sport is.
Nails it.
The same as everybody they're competing against in their piece. So, so that I, I don't, I don't think there's any doubt that we can field one team of each next year. You know, it's funny how stuff falls in your lap when you go to do this. We have, we have, Mike Rush actually is a high school wrestler. We have a law enforcement officer in the city who is a wrestler. And the same thing, they ask me about wrestling all the time and we had a marine recruiter come through who, they want to recruit, they want to do things for you and wrestling mats are really expensive and he was a wrestler. He said, you guys have wrestling? I said, no, and mats are kind of expensive. He said, we'll give you wrestling mats. So, we actually have a commitment from the United States Marines without doing anything for a set of wrestling mats. I actually have to go and see a week of their boot camp because they want educators to understand what's going on so we can speak intelligently about it. So, we're going to do a little bit of fitness testing with them, which we've done in the past. They bring a pull-up bar out and that. I'm going to go see their training and they're going to give us, if you, wrestling mat, ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Wow, really? One?
One. But that's all you need. And again, that's when he said that, I was like, well, hold on because I'm not sure where we're going with this, but if we go, we will gladly take a wrestling mat.
The only thing when you said that softball, like, talk about Thurston, so softball and lacrosse would be the same time, but softball's played at Thurston?
So, so softball is at Thurston. When we would talk about using that facility would be maybe in the winter when soccer's out here, so we got to do some preseason up there. We would have to in the spring. We didn't have to, we could go to the elementaries, but we could also bring it to the high school.
And also, if they were playing away, that field would be available.
Aren't we, aren't we going to rehand to you that weekend?
Yeah, Almore was actually summer.
Oh, it is, okay. So, I'll have to do that.
So, you seem to answer the question I had, which was whether your sports would draw from, if that would be a problem since we do have, you know, a smaller school. It doesn't sound like that would, you didn't particularly ask students what sport they would not do to do the.
No, again, most of them are guys and gals who are doing fall and don't have a spring already. Again, in my experience, like, let's say a kid who's not a great sprinter, you know, he's our third, fourth, fifth sprinter. He might choose to go try lacrosse, she might choose rather than be our third, fourth, fifth sprinter. That's, again, a handful of track kids has been my experience have chosen to go do it. The way we're structured at the start, if we had track practice first and lacrosse second, a kid could choose to try and see how they like it even. And, you know, our practices, because they're not going to be at the same time, would give the opportunity, they wouldn't have to choose one or the other. Eventually they would, obviously, but I like that scenario where they could try both off the bat.
And then so, give it opportunity for one of our students perhaps to do a one-place sport and then do a continual preseason postseason.
Right.
Which is not as good for them as it was.
Right. And some of you may know already, what we're trying to build, we're trying to build a comprehensive weight training program that all of our kids are involved in. So, this also, that's where coaches get a little bit upset when kids miss their weight training piece. But if we get that piece in, our football coach isn't going to mind our lacrosse kids missing football because they're going to get their weight training in in our program. John Shanahan is very aware that he is going to lose kids in the off-season. John Shanahan is very motivated to have kids like Jonathan Todd's son at our school playing football. I mean, it just, if you haven't seen John Todd's kid play, he would be our best player. You know, so that's, our football coach sees a better trade-out than the loss of some kids in the off-season.
Potentially reading the article that the students had in the newspaper.
Yeah.
So.
I have the kids every single day coming. What do we have on lacrosse meeting?
Well, it had to do with the striping of the fields, so.
So, again, I U S D Irvine High had a football field, soccer field, and all they did every string was they painted in the boys' and girls' lacrosse. When it's over, you wash it off and it's done.
Because it is different and is it different for boys and girls?
Yes, they have two different fields. There are fields out there right now, again, when Beckman just did theirs and Irvine redid theirs, they put all four fields in. So, they're all in different colors. You've got a white, a yellow, a blue. It's actually not that bad once you get used to it.
I don't know why.
So, one of the other issues that I see is transporting kids to the practice sites.
So. Like, look at, it's so, it's so interesting. And that, as I've gone through this, this year, one of the biggest places that we can cut costs in athletics and get more out to our teams is transportation. And so, we were talking about renting two vans next year because it would cost us less to rent two vans for a year than it did to bus our softball team up the hill where we could have used vans. And I brought that to our boosters and our booster said, let us buy you two vans.
Like, the general athletic boosters?
Because they, they've been, they've had a carryover that they need to, to get rid of.
Yeah.
So, again, for me, that was pretty exciting, not having to bus the softball girls. You know, we have two vans available to us all of the time to get kids to those locations. That would be the, that would be the plan. We definitely need to go that route rather than busing them. It's, it's much cheaper. So, but again, the boosters jumped right on that and.
So, does it need to be an, does he need to come back as an action item to bring the sports? Okay, so they're looking for directions.
Yeah, so we need directions, I think. What I've said this size at this point is bringing back the addition of these three sports with potential costs, including starter costs, one-time costs that would occur, some of the ongoing costs we incur, we can obviously call on some of our families in our own community that have some areas that should tease and I feel to help with that. And as, you know, Lance mentioned, he was part of it as a growth out of Beckman. I happened to be the principal when I grew out of Woodbridge. So, we have, both have some history in adding sports and adding particularly different levels as well. So, I think what we'll do, if it's appropriate with the board, bring back an action I have at the next meeting, that will be an action for you to potentially approve with all of the notes. So, we can tell you, these are all the notes that we have in terms of costs and that way you know exactly what a different question for we're going with, so.
Did read that piece in the paper today that C I F figures that they'll be having playoffs in lacrosse starting next year because they need to cross the twenty percent school threshold and they will do it with boys. And then because of by the line, they will offer the playoffs in girls even if they want to reach the twenty percent.
Right. Jason, I just sent him an article today that was in the National A D S letter I get and it was boys lacrosse, just like was stated earlier, is, and, and not just, but boys lacrosse on the whole is the fastest growing sport nationwide. You're seeing it go everywhere, so. Can I, can I plug one more thing while I'm here? I think some of you have seen, June third, we're having our community day. So, we're going to be up in the quad, we're going to do pancakes, we're doing athletic physicals that day. Laguna Beach P D just reached out to us today, what can we do to get involved? They said they can have officer cook pancakes all morning if you want. I think fire is going to get involved also. We have a local musician playing from nine to eleven. We have music from a bunch of local musicians on DVD to play throughout the day. Drama's going to perform, cheer is going to perform, dance is going to perform, band is going to perform. So, all of our groups are going to be out there. We're going to have our three-D printers out there, we're going to have ceramics going. So, we're going to have everything, everything we do at the school is going to be going on that day, so. It's also going to be the debut of our athletic leadership team that we've been working on. They're going to have their shirts, they're going to be out there, they're going to kind of be the liaison showing people where to go. There's an opportunity to get Mr. Billinger at the dunk tank apparently all of a sudden, which sounds popular to some of our people. So, anyway, anything you guys can do. The signs just went up today at the high school, they're wanted at both elementaries and the middle school, and then we'll start to have press releases. So, it's going to be a really, really good day. We're hoping to feed seven hundred people and that's, that's what we're shooting for, so, anyway. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next information item is item fifteen, report and discussion on community learning centers, C L C program. And are we going to use this? Are there any other blue cards before we start? That we need to speak and turn them into a blue card? Because of the number of your cards that we see, I need to draw your attention to what our, what our procedure is at this point, which is we allow, what's written in our format, that we allow three minutes per speaker for a maximum of twenty minutes per topic, unless the time is weighed by majority of course. So, after we pass twenty minutes, then the board will need to vote to extend that time. At this time, I have thirty-nine speaker cards. Thirty-five minutes. Forty-five minutes, forty-five minutes. Forty-five minutes worth of speaker cards if you all speak three minutes. So, in order to have more people speak, if you feel that you can say what you would like to say to us in less than three minutes, then it would help. It would help us to be able to hear from more people. Now, we have, Dr. Gloria will make this presentation, we shall restart the public comment.
It was brought to our attention back in March when Mr. Coleman and Miss Swinson, Human Resources, were meeting with the C L C P T A membership as we were discussing the process of replacing the two C L C teachers. That we were under the impression that we were going to transfer staff members that we currently have on staff into those programs due to our current staffing numbers of being slightly overstaffed at the elementary school. It was brought to us, brought to our attention that California Education Code actually prohibits involuntarily transferring staff into programs such as alternative programs. And so, as such, C L C is considered an alternative program. So, this discussion clearly prompted additional research on staff part to really go back and review the history of C L C, past practices, and to determine all the California education codes and requirements under, that we currently are supposed to be working on related to alternate school programs as well as current status of enrollment because we were made aware of our enrollment numbers continue to be challenging the three-four, specifically three-four combo. So, give just a real brief, and I know many people have some history, I won't go into too much detail. But again, C L C was authorized by the school board in nineteen eighty-three. And under the Education Code fifty-eight five-hundred and fifty-eight five-twelve, which allows the school district to, may establish and maintain a one or more alternative schools or programs within its boundaries. And that is the education code by which the Community Learning Center was born. The approval of the center had a, there was a lot of caveats into the actual language that was the approval in nineteen eighty-three. We've been able to kind of go back and look at some of the proposals. There was a task force that had been created, where I believe President Victor's was on board at the time that this task force was going on. So, I've been able to glean a little information, pulling on her amazing memory from that time period. We were able to, again, assume some of the things and some of this information's in my executive summary, so I won't go over too much detail. But more or less, why we are here today is that the Education Code fifty-eight five-oh-three states that teachers employed and students enrolled in an alternative program must be selected entirely from volunteers. And so, to that end, we posted within our district two vacancies for the C L C program within our schools for two weeks. We had no staff members' requests or pose any interest into transferring into that program. Unfortunately, it's in the state that Education Code prohibits us from transferring staff into that program. So, should the board desire, desire to continue, we would have to actually hire two additional staff members onto our staff that we don't currently need for staffing reasons. Student enrollment has fluctuated a little bit since the, since last week. We have had a few more confirmed in grade three four. I believe the last numbers that Mr. Coleman sent to me were approximately about six to eight students have confirmed in grade three. Looking at you, somewhere in that range. And he was verifying that last, yesterday, as well as potentially, I think, four or five in grade four. So, a potential total max would be around twelve. There are some people that would be waiting because of sibling requests that currently was not in the approval of C L C. When it was initially approved in nineteen eighty-three, it was open to all students. There was a sibling language that was added into the enrollment. So, again, investigation would realize that that's not been authorized and it actually goes against our board policies that currently stands related to intra-district transfers, which does not provide a caveat for siblings in space available. And last but not least, you know, I, I wanted to bring this to the board. I know there's a lot of parents in the audience today simply to get some direction moving forward. We are well aware of the staffing implications that this causes for the district. And to that end, I pray to the board for their questions and future direction.
And I think all of us are appreciative of all the research that you've done to familiarize yourself and all of us with the background of the program particularly with all the requirements that exist in head code and in, and in the state with the, which also, California Department of Education also has their regulations. And before the board asks a question, this is the time when we take the public comment. And so, we will start. Tom Rossford?
Would you believe it if I told you that I'm a C L C graduate? Probably not. But I'm, I'm the dad of two C L C graduates and, and I'll tell you that hardly a day went by when they were going through that program that I didn't vicariously enjoy and feel enriched by the experiences that they had and that they, they brought home. And that, then, our involvement as parents in the program, going into the classrooms and grading papers and giving talks and the outings, all of it. So many times I thought, this is the kind of education I didn't get growing up. And I just thought, I'd like to see every child in Laguna and. and, and especially where I, where I taught for, for 40 years as a history professor at Santa Ana College. I, I think of the students that I had in my classrooms. How they had nothing that came close to that kind of, of interaction, kind of give and take between teachers and student learners. And they didn't have the richness of the exchange between the parents. Because when the parents would get together, they had, they had read books about alternative education. They were, they were up on it. They, the parents educated me and the, the teachers at CLC, same thing, same thing. So I said, our two sons went through the program, they both sent letters to you. Both of them did very well scholastically when they moved on from CLC. One graduated from UCLA and he's an attorney today, a public defender because one thing that program stresses, civic involvement, giving back. And our other son went to UC Berkeley and got a great education. He's a businessman and he brings a social conscience into whatever corporation he's working with. And as he said in the letter to you, that, that comes back to what he learned at CLC. And that was that learning is not just a linear process. It, it also involves synthesis, it also involves seeing a larger picture and, and imagination, and then bringing that into the business world and then bringing that into the legal profession, wherever those students go on. That's, that's invaluable. So what we have here is something that's golden, I know it's fallen on, on troubled times, but I think you're gonna hear just how special this place has been. And I urge you to, to make it, enable it to continue, thank you.
Anita Dobbs?
Hi. Anita Dobbs, retired high school, Laguna Beach High School English teacher, founding mother of CLC and proud grandmother of a CLC graduate, my grandson. And, you know, 34 years ago, I stood in front of the Laguna Beach Unified School District Board to argue on behalf of introducing alternative education into this district. It's hard to believe it was that long ago. And at that time, it was a very, very contentious issue in the community. And there was so much interest on both sides of should we introduce this or not, that the meeting, the school board meeting had to be held in the high school theater because so many people wanted to be a part of that decision. And luckily, the ultimate decision was that we, was that CLC came about. And you have read, if you've been reading your emails, and I know there's so many that must have come in, you have read the testimonies about how wonderful CLC has been for the Osborne family, for my family, for so many people here. It was a miraculous thing. And for most of the schools, and so you know about the field trips and all the, the parents coming in and community members coming in, it was such a rich, nourishing environment. At that time, over, over the years, CLC students always scored very hot on district testing. And especially at the beginning, the students were tested very stringently because we wanted to make sure, and the district wanted to make sure, are these kids getting the same quality education along with the field trips and the different activities that were going on? And they were. But now, things are different. Now there is even more testing that's required and even more mandates from the state and from the district. And my sense of CLC now, and what's been happening over the last few years, is that it seems like we have almost an impossible situation. We want CLC to be what it was always for us, for our community, for our kids, for our grandkids. And at the same time, there's all this overlay of testing and state mandates, district mandates that weren't there before. And when they weren't there, our students still did fine, but they're there now. So it seems to me that your task, and maybe the community task also, is to try to figure out, how can we keep what was best about CLC and form it into something that we work today with today's constraints? Thank you.
Okay, Shannon Hoon?
Hello, good evening, board members. My name's Shannon Hoon and I have three children at CLC. And I'm the current CLC president for this year. Thank you to the, all the CLC community members who've come tonight to show support for CLC and for the district's effort to be sure CLC is functioning as it should. We really want to thank Mr. Coleman for, and the superintendent and the board for taking the time and the resources to fully understand the program. The past two years have been pretty rocky for us. We've been through some big changes with our two teachers retiring and the common core, a wonderful new principal and, and district members, and then yet another turnover of both of our teachers. And I think we see all these people here tonight because with change comes uncertainty. But I can say with certainty from having worked with many of you that we are really looking forward to having our educators, our professional educators, lead us, not just through this challenge, but through the future. It's time to bring CLC into the new era. And we want to protect the longevity of the program in a way that makes sense in the current educational environment and in the district of Laguna Beach. And as parents, we simply want to offer whatever support the board and the superintendent and the other outstanding educators in our community think is appropriate. So we want to be in compliance with the requirements for an alternative program of choice. Everything that's in the superintendent's report makes sense to us, we think it's important. We do have someone here that wants to speak to the sibling preference piece because we've been told it's something that might be possible and it is important to the program. But we're really looking at this as a welcome opportunity to get back on track in the current environment. So thank you again for your time and your thoughtful consideration.
Cindy Newman Jacobs?
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna be very short and sweet because I've known this program for 20 of the 35 years in different capacities, and I've loved it all the way through. And while I know that there have been some people saying how difficult it is to have an alternative program within a public school, I think that it is, it could be the gem of the, you know, the, the district. It is, it has such potential. I think that teachers are key and always have been. And I think that having the high academics is essential to having this wonderful alternative piece to it all. And the alumni should really be sort of the people that stand up for it because I know 20 years of alumni and there are some really incredible people. And I think that the key components that come out are the social consciousness, I just heard that, the kindness piece, working with others and working for the good of the community and the earth and your friends. And it's such a special place. I wish I had known earlier, I only had my third child go through CLC. But it's been a wonderful experience and I hope that it can be resurrected to be the gem that it really has the potential to be. Thank you.
Megan Hunt?
Hi, I'm Megan Hunt and I have three children at Top of the World. Two of them are in CLC and the third is in kindergarten. And I hope she'll be in CLC next year in first grade. One of the things about the history of CLC is really that with the core elements of the program, it has created the perfect environment for a testing ground. And as a parent, I've been really impressed in that the teachers in CLC have been empowered to explore and to test new educational concepts. So over the course of the years, the teachers have really embraced that opportunity. And, and we've seen them really test some concepts that were new and adopt some things before we've seen other, other places adopting them. So just, I have a long list. Quickly, integrated thematic learning, project-based experimental learning, multiple intelligence and sensory learning, outdoor classrooms with the garden, and lots of focus on lifelong guidelines and values and emotional management tools, STMA, yoga, mindfulness, maker space, scholarships for graduating seniors that actually went through the CLC program. As a parent, I could go on and on a story where I've seen it, but a couple of things. I've seen Cheryl talk about how she and Lea worked with a consultant in integrated thematic learning when it was new. They brought a consultant in and the two of them partnered with the consultant to really develop the program. And the ownership and the way she's so proud of what they created made me very excited about the program, to see a teacher so passionate. And then one example with the kids, I, I get to encounter children, the alumni who are now in college or high school, and they all talk about the emotional management piece that Lea brought to the program. Everyone brings up a heart lock in how they've used that for the rest of their life. So some of these innovations, I just love to see the way that they've carried through and just created such a strong program.
Kelly Zenser?
Good evening, my name's Kelly Zenser. I have a fifth grader who's an alum of CLC and I have a third grader who's in CLC. We love it, we're super grateful that the school district has an alternative program. We love the, the creativity and the collaboration that comes in the mixed classrooms. You heard Ms. Davidson, someone spoke about how their daughter loves a first and second grade classroom. My daughter loves that and the kids learn a lot in different ways. I think there's a strong need for an alternative program. If you look at the rise of charter schools, you can see that. And I think that can be a huge selling point. I know we're worried about enrollment here for elementary schools. I also love how the parents help support the curriculum, the art pull-out that we have every other week. Those parents meet with the teacher, what do you want to do? What's your theme? What are you doing in social studies? Let's do a Native American art piece. What are you doing in science? You're learning about the ocean, let's do an ocean art piece. Maker Space, we did a, had the kids build in teams, collaboration in teams, build a windmill that could pull a little cup up, so obviously a small windmill. And that was, they were studying alternate, different forms of energy, wind, solar, you know. So it's very integrated, the parents support the teachers. And it's, it's just been an amazing experience for our family, so super grateful, thank you.
Perry Doshi?
Hello, my name is Perry Doshi O'Neil. I have a fifth grader who graduated from CLC and is now at Top of the World, in Circle's class. And then I have a third grader who's currently in the program. I'm here, obviously I love CLC, I've had such a positive experience. One of my roles at CLC is working with the field trips. And, you know, a lot of people talk about the field trips and it's one of the things the kids love. And I just want to spend just a moment telling you, just to kind of, as the field trip parent, and I had heard that role from someone else who had done it for three or four years, sort of what we do is we really go in and talk to the teachers and say, what subjects are you going to now cover? What is your curriculum about? And then they tell us, and then I go and spend hours looking at what field trips have CLC done? What else is out there? You know, what could match? Okay, now we're talking about STEM. What could match best? Something new, something innovative. So it's something that we then offer to the parent, to the teachers to say, hey, you know, here are some options, does this sound good? And it really brings the community together. We get the first, second, third, fourth graders together, working together, the parents working together, chaperoning, driving, and being there to support the hands-on learning experience, to support what's been going on in the classroom from the teachers. So I just kind of want to touch on that because that's something that comes up a lot about CLC. I also want to just talk about the sibling preference. I know it is not currently part of our code here, but I understand from what I, what I see is that it is possible to be that under, I think it's California Ed Code 35160.5B, is that the code does allow districts to include a sibling preference. And that's just something I want to mention in just a little more detail because as we're considering this program, we really would ask that you would consider putting the sibling preference into the code for within our district. It, you know, is done in many charter schools, so it is definitely permitted. It also just creates statistically an easier life for parents. So when you imagine a family that might have, you know, a family that has three kids in CLC. So if we have one kid at Elmore, one kid at CLC and one kid, let's say two at Elmore, it's just logistically, trying to get all the kids to school, being able to be part of the community, not just the CLC community, but the TOW community. We really want you to consider, sort of like the family logistics of getting everyone everywhere, and also the commitment that the family makes. Obviously, a part of CLC is promoting family volunteer time, having families get to know each other, building that community. That's not just in CLC, that's also at Top of the World. So we ask that you really consider that sibling preference and see if that's something that you can include as you're, as we're moving forward. And of course, we ask that you please consider getting us two new teachers. I mean, I, I know the last time we hired, we had a shortfall, but we really are hopeful and with Mr. Coleman and all of your leadership, we hope that we can find right match.
Thank you. During that, is it Raffi?
Me too.
Me too, thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My daughter Ellie's in the program and she's in second grade and she loves ZID. And one of the best things that she loves, both her dad and I are able to go on field trips. It's not like we have to be in the lottery, you know, on the regular, on the regular campus. That's what you have to do. And then I just, I love the piece about community service. I was in charge of that the last, working with others the last couple of years. And it's just been really wonderful being a part of that with the kids. It's such a unique piece to help them grow compassion toward others and to just have that experience, which I don't, you know, see that happening quite as much, which you just can't with the time. So and then I think one other thing that I really appreciate, appreciated about the program is the fact that being together for four years, they end up becoming like siblings, really. And some of the difficulty of having conflicts and things like that really teach them a lot. And it, go figure adversity is really good for us. So I just wanted to bring out, I think that's kind of a unique piece. So anyway, thank you.
Kim Dunsing?
Hi, I'm Kim Dunsing. I have two kids that are alumni and one first grader, so this is our round two. And I have to say that this was probably the single best decision we could have made for our children in the CLC. So I want to thank you for taking a careful look at the program and the decisions that need to be made to get the program back on track. I feel like I have the great fortune, having been through CLC during the, what I'll call the well-oiled machine years, when our teachers, our amazing teachers, had CLC running like a top. And, and I know that CLC can get to that place again. So I want to talk about the elephant in the room, which is enrollment. The past two years have been very challenging for CLC, particularly this past year. But the real story here is not that we have nine spots to fill, which is the number that we have. It's that we have 30. It's that we have thirty-one families who still want to be in this program and a hundred and sixty families on our waiting list. That says something about the commitment to the program. These families want an alternative program and they feel that CLC is the program that they want to be committed to. So, this is all coming on the fact that we don't even have teachers at this point. This is the level of commitment we have, without even knowing who our teachers are going to be. So, we have great confidence in our district leaders that you will choose fabulous teachers for us. And at that point, we can then go to the long list of people who are interested in the program but are in the wait-and-see mode because they want to see who our teachers are going to be. At that point, we can begin our outreach and talk to them about CLC. I'm confident that we can fill those nine spots, once we know who these teachers are going to be. And once we can do the outreach and tell these families the district is committed and helping us and guiding us into this new era of education and making the changes that need to be made to bring us into compliance, to bring us into a place where CLC will have longevity in this new world of education. So, we're excited about also the lottery system. We feel like this has been a long time coming. It's fair for families that are entering the district. Am I up?
Sure.
Okay.
And you're up, and as we slowly go on, we need to have board approval through the speaker something.
Yeah.
Second. Um, very, am I? Lea Hansen?
What? Not good, or maybe it's really good. Everything that I planned on saying has already been said. I worked in the program from ninety-three till when I retired. I have seen many, many, many ups and downs and many, many, many wonderful times. What has always been amazing for me is that with the community of CLC and with this wonderful Laguna Beach School District, we have been able to pull it off. It is a program that continues to evolve. It's not the same as it was when it first got started. However, there are some parts that are the same. If you look at these people that were here, that came, they were in the beginning of CLC, to students, to current people that are in the program, that is a huge statement. And these families, these kids, they have been friends and they will be friends forever. And in my email to you, I said, you know, it's really hard to describe what's so wonderful about CLC. Yes, we need to teach to the standards. Yes, we need to be up with the educational code. And yet, there is what I tell the kids, I don't care how smart you are, if you are not heart smart, if you do not make a global difference, if you do not make a difference in your community, then what is the importance of being the most brilliant person on the planet? And so, I believe that CLC is a form of education that does that and we have to ebb and flow and problem solve. And right now is a beautiful time for all of us together to take the principles upon which CLC was founded and work together and problem solve. Not meaning that we are better than anything else, but we are just an option. And so, I invite all of us to continue with the love, continue with the heart lock-ins and let's see if we can continue to make a difference. I thank you so much for your time and for really looking into CLC, to having faith in us. So, come on, team, together we can.
Thanks, Lea. Monica Golden?
Sorry, I'm going to read a little bit just because I'm not the greatest public speaker. I have a first grader in the CLC program and I also have three kids that are former CLC students. My husband and I both grew up in Laguna Beach and attended Laguna Beach schools. So, when we return to Laguna Beach, because we wanted our kids to be in this unique environment that Laguna Beach really is, we also chose CLC because we valued the further uniqueness that CLC brings to education and to the district. We sought an education that was enhanced by the community's service-mindedness that CLC brings, the collaboration of the four different grade levels, and the lifelong guidelines, just to name a few of the things that we value. Although CLC is designed for students to remain in the program for four years, that's not always the case. Sometimes there's openings for kids that are in the higher level grades. In our experience, I had my second son entered midway through his third grade year and he was welcomed with open arms into CLC and just assimilated perfectly. My daughter also entered in third grade and she just really flourished in the program. Entering CLC in the upper grades has been a smooth transition for other children as well. So, I see no difficulty for kids coming into the third and fourth grade. It hasn't been an issue at all in the past. The kids still get all that CLC has to offer within one or two years of the program. I value CLC from how it has shaped my children. I value the CLC teachers, the other parents, the other students, and the unique program that CLC has, as well as the strength of the school just as a whole and has shaped my children into the kids that I think are wonderful kids and they're ready to explore and learn and give back to others. I believe that Laguna Beach School District is stronger as a whole with what CLC community brings to it, what it has brought to it, what it brings now and what I know it will bring in the future. Thank you.
Yilly Ann? Yilly Ann? No?
Let's hear it again, can we? Yilly, Yilly Ann?
Yilly Ann?
Thank you.
That's right, I may miss it out.
Now, you'll say it correctly.
Hi, yeah, my name's Anne Gilligan. And I'm the parent of a child who went through a CLC. And CLC is an alternative, and I'm going to read, I'm certain you'll be more comfortable with that, is an alternative school in Laguna Beach where these kids learn that the effort they make can be felt within their city and the community at large. They learn about volunteering and see their parents actively volunteering in the classroom. This is where the strengths of the parents are incorporated in the curriculum. And because of this, my daughter has had some very unique opportunities. She's dissected a cow's eyeball before she was age ten. She learned about upholstery, songwriting, recording, gardening. It's one of these special programs she's participated in where she was able to learn about the Mind Institute's math program. It's an awesome visual-spatial math program named Gigi that led to great problem-solving skills and allowed kids to progress and master skills at their own speed. I believe it's one of the reasons for math skills today are as strong as they are. This is a place where you have children learning life skills that they carry on throughout their life, lessons on respect, honesty, patience, problem-solving, resourcefulness, curiosity. These guidelines and life skills shape the way they tackle their everyday and their everyday for years to come. These kids see what they learn in school and it comes to life through the monthly outings they go on and the projects they are tasked to do. These kids learn to work with a team at an early age and learn the value of communication, cooperation, and mentoring and working with kids of different ages. It's a place where they see themselves and their classmates grow over the four years they are together from grades one to four, where special bonds of friendship are nourished among the students and their families. At the end of their four-year journey, they give a five-minute speech at their graduation of all they have learned and accomplished, a huge feat. It's, it is my hope that this program finds its way through this time of transition to benefit more children in the near future.
Sherry Morgan?
Hi. So, we have two kids that went through CLC. We had one that was in first grade and one that was invited to try as a third grade entrant. This was nine years ago. You know, CLC is, I love CLC. When I heard about CLC as a new parent, coming into the district, everything that everybody has said here was exactly what I wanted for my kids. I thought, well, that's for me. So, the minute somebody told me to sign up, I signed up, got my kids on that list. At the time, there was an idea that that would mean any kids of mine would have that option as they came along and it did get offered to my current seventh grader and we declined. It was not the right program for my first grade student. It was too much going on and things like that. I'm not here to bash CLC, I think it's phenomenal. I think that the things that the people have said today are something that we should definitely take into consideration as the program is being evaluated and analyzed. With the absolute total respect for every single person in this room who I have known for years, being a part of the LCAP program, which I'm on at TOW, I think that one of the things that I got out of that, when my third grade son went in, he had the opportunity to try it for the day, which was brilliant. He was in Leah's class, absolutely loved her. He also was kind of already entrenched into his class because it was two weeks after school started. He's like, I don't know if I want to risk that. So, we didn't, we passed. But, what we talked about, my son and I, because he had this opportunity and he asked to try it, was to look at what things do the, does this main school offer? And one of the things that I would love to encourage all of the CLC parents here who did not have the opportunity to have their kids in first through fourth grade, is TOW is not the same campus that it was when my kids started. It's not the same campus that some of you have since left. The direction that this administration is taking our district is listening to what CLC has to offer. They have incorporated a lot of the wonderful traditions of CLC into the main campus. And I think that's important to consider. I would love to see CLC as a unit continue. At the same time, should the board find that it might not be the right time to go on, I would encourage you to draw from these people, talk to them. What else can we do at our district level? You are doing a phenomenal job. Mr. Coleman has changed the entire, what's the word, environment, town.
Culture.
Culture at school. My daughter got to throw a pie, a whipped cream, in his face. That to me is as memorable as... So, but Marys, in our new science program, my ten-year-old daughter just dissected a fish. There are phenomenal opportunities at our school and we are small. CLC is a great thing, I'm not here to take a side, but whichever direction you go, CLC has so many wonderful things to offer on top of what you're already doing that's amazing, then you should definitely keep the conversation going and keep it percolating, whether it's within a small unit or it filters into the whole school because everybody can benefit from what CLC has to offer and we are here to educate all of the children and give them all the same opportunity. Thank you.
Ed Kaufman?
Good evening, I'm Dr. Ed Kaufman. I'm a forty-year resident of Laguna Beach. I had three sons go through the school system. I now have a grandson that at Elmoreau. And only my third son, Adam, was lucky enough to go to CLC. I think it was probably just a few days after he was born, I put him on the waiting list. And he wasn't even in the top five at that time. So, CLC was very desirable and I was happy to be a part of it. I became co-chairperson of the parents group and lucky enough to have Lea as one of the teachers. And we had our little blips there. There were some issues, people were saying, oh, CLC has, yeah, contributed a lot and now, the whole school has picked up what they learned from CLC and there's nothing more to be learned. So, CLC either has to come up with new innovations or we should disband it. Well, we didn't fortunately. And so, it was around for many more years. And when my son Adam heard that it was being, there was a consideration that it might not continue to exist, he was shocked and he sent a letter to most of you and thank you for your answer, especially Jane, who, he was very pleased, took the time to write a detailed response. So, I'll just read you a little bit because I think he embodies CLC and he became articulate, I think, as a result of CLC. "I was taught about peace, love, respect for others as they are, and care for the environment, among other values. Overall, as a child of CLC, I felt loved for the individual that I was. Leaving CLC and attending fifth grade in a standardized top-of-the-world classroom was actually a huge shock for me as a child. I could not understand why some classmates teased each other, nor the pressure to be cool. At CLC, I was part of a family. In fact, I think the school and district should be attempting to implement the CLC environment that I experienced in more classrooms at TOW, rather than trying to abandon CLC altogether. The educational experience at CLC produced world-changing individuals on small and large scales." It really did make a dent in Adam. And I knew that he had a real girlfriend when she told me, oh, he shared the heart lock-in with me. So, this last sentence is, "I just urge and plead with you to help improve CLC rather than destroy an amazing subdivision and community at top of the world."
Jim Rogers?
Hi there, good evening. I'm Jim Rogers and I am the CTA support person for the Laguna Beach Unified Faculty Association. And I think it was our first speaker that said, every child should get this. So, I'm not here to discuss the merits of this program, but the effectiveness of district funding. It's my job to look at the district budget and then help the negotiating team. So, when I come to you tonight with just concerns, and that is enrollment has decreased for this program and the teaching positions are open while the district remains overstaffed. When you're spending upwards of $250,000 to $280,000 for less than forty students, it's not really an effective use of district funds. Again, not discussing the merits of this program. These funds should be used for all students in the district. Combination classes are very difficult to teach. I taught twenty-two years and one year had to teach combination class and luckily, never had to after that. But, when you have to hire new teachers to the district, there's a big learning curve right there. Add on the program and it can be a very difficult position, especially when, you know, there are great teachers that are here. You've had great teachers in the district, but no one's volunteering. That's just, it's troubling. So, the amount of funding that's used for CLC, I'm going to rattle it right now, with less than forty students could be and should be used for all students in the Laguna Beach School District. Every student should be globally aware. Every student should receive quality programs such as CLC delivers. I hope that you can find a transition from CLC by using what's best from CLC for use in the overall district. Thank you very much. Don't fuck with me.
Joe Johnson?
Sounds like I put my name in there.
Present to you.
Okay, thanks. Glasses. Oh, I forget my glasses. So, first of all, Joe Johnson. Students are now thirty-two and thirty-eight and proud to be where they are in their lives because of what I've considered a church. It was a sacred place in my family. Two still learning different people. Both my husband and I were never diagnosed. Both my husband and I were never diagnosed. Aaron Futter entered that classroom only because a long-term sub said, "I'll go get you in." He was a failure and he only believed me. Mom, you only say I'm good, I'm a good kid because you're my mom. I'm looking at you. I'm saying we're not cookie cutters. Yeah, you got a budget. I hope your school district is bigger than a budget. You need a place for kids who don't fit in the classroom. You get an F every day for nine months? Good luck trying to turn that kid around and make him believe in himself. That's what this place does. You don't have a place in this district where sixty parents' kids can interact and learn from each other. I had sixty kids. I was a parent of sixty kids. I learned from every single one of them, and I learned from the parents. I learned what not to do, what wasn't working. I learned what those families are going through and how to help and what I could do in my own family to avoid those pitfalls. I can't tell you enough how important this program is. We live in an environment that insists, our government insists that we are cookies, all made out of the same shape. We are not. The first thing parents do is take a learning style test. And lo and behold, all of this one learning style, they all sat together. They all related to each other. They all accepted each other. Did they have the same kids that learned that way? Hell, no. Did the parents know? Hell, no. They all approached those kids in the same way they had been learning. You've gotta stop that. You've gotta identify that. Every parent in this district should take that test. Every parent should realize that my husband doesn't learn like I do. That's why I damn is hell for my kid. Because my, my beloved husband doesn't understand how my kid learns. There is so much, I can't tell you, that this, this little gem has to share. And it works because it's small. This district works as good as it does because it's small. Treasure, you guys, you don't know how much you're gonna lose. You have no idea. You gotta fight for the things. They're precious. I don't know what my kid would be like if he hadn't been able to go to a place that said, "You're not dumb kids, you're not a dummy. You're not a failure." At eight, ninety percent of the prison population are learning different. What's that say about the biggest population in prison? That's our country. For western state, western. Hello, good guys. Fight!
Hi, my name is Jayden Sobzilber and I attended CLC one through four. I am about to go into high school and I miss CLC so much. I miss going on field trips. Last field trip I went on, I think I went to, yeah, I went to Catalina, had a sleep in a tent. Went in CLC, went to Lurie Tar Pits, got to see Sabretooth Tigers and things like that. Much more fun. But I remember the friendships that I built in CLC. And I remember still seeing those kids today and still knowing that we all went through the exact same thing. And something that I noticed in Thurston is there's way more segregation between the grade levels, eighth, seventh, and sixth. They're at the bottom, we're at the top. And there's like divisions, there are certain groups and cliques. But in CLC, we're all together for four years. You'll see, third graders, they're coming to Thurston and you instantly know them and you still talk to them. But it's hard to explain, but being with a kid for four years and then it feels like nothing can break you guys up. You guys know each other, you guys been through too much to let that all go away. And it has helped me so much. It is, fifth grade was a breeze because of CLC. It taught me so much how to deal with certain emotions when everything was going bad, if I was getting bad grades, how to breathe and just make it all better. And I think that was a major part, too, the teachers that helped me throughout all of this. And I don't know a teacher that can make almost our classroom go silent because of, probably not a red tr- like a red dinosaur. That's how you're going to stay silent, like the red.
Watch out!
But they were amazing. They, they were the real power of CLC that made it so great. And I feel that you would keep this curriculum going. Thank you.
James Osborne?
Hi. So, we've spoken about emotional regulation, which as a psychologist I know is so important to learn early on. And my first ear- early exposure as a volunteer in the CLC program, I was standing in, Kathy Reynolds, the, one of the founding teachers, asked the students to line up. And my son and another girl ran in an almost collision course. And my sweet son kicked the girl who he thought had gotten in before she did. And rather than be punished, what Kathy did is got down to his level and asked him to think of what Jenny would feel, how she felt in that situation. And that's the beginning of empathy. And so, instead of seeing himself as a bad boy that got punished and told to, you know, sit down, maybe in a corner, I don't know what, what is done. But he learned to develop empathy. He told us last night when he called that he remembered that when the class got a little frenzied, the teachers would have them sit down and just be quiet. And it was the beginning of learning how to meditate and calm themselves. So, there are many techniques and goals that have been talked about tonight. But I, I do have a question as someone who talked about the over, overstaffing of the district. We had two CLC teachers retire at the same time. Were new teachers hired to take their place from outside the district. So, so are they still in the district? And just transferred out to other programs? I don't know. But I, I hope that you can find a problem or find a solution to the staffing problem that you have and that you can find a way for CLC to continue. It's provided generations of children, now adults, who look back with fondness and appreciation to the learning that they acquired at CLC. Thank you.
I'm gonna work hard in a civil movement, so we need a speaker from Magus. Please can speak.
Okay, I guess I'm going first. Uh, my name's Jake Magus, I'm a senior at the high school here. Um, I just wanna say, I'm sure we all know this and this is kind of an important thing. When is the age that kids learn the most? Okay, anyone know? It's when they're young. CLC gives you that opportunity. I feel, I was in there for four years and I came out and I found myself accelerating through fifth grade faster than anyone else. It was, it was just a breeze. And you're able to experience things and learn things that you would not be able to do in the regular school. And I, I just had so many opportunities and learned to deal with stress and all those things that I feel like I would've had a much harder time in fifth grade without it. And if you're eliminating a program like this, you're just eliminating possible better futures for kids who have the great opportunity to actually be in this program. So, it's...
I'm Sidney Magus, I'm a sophomore at Laguna Beach High School. I graduated six years ago. I remember vividly the day I graduated. I made my five-minute speech and that was it. I was saying goodbye to four years of, you know, the most important part of my life right there. Looking back, I still realize that CLC was my favorite part of school. Leia was my favorite teacher and still is right now. I, you know, we did a lot of public speaking projects and I can confidently stand up here and speak in front of you today. A lot of kids can't do that. I'm really proud to say that I was a CLC member. I look forward to like seeing what goes in the future. And I couldn't leave. I turned it, when I became a fifth grader, every day I would go back and visit Leia because I just couldn't leave that program.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of CLC. I am the father of Jake and Sidney. My name's John Magus. And I would just like to say that I think that the investment that we made in CLC was the most important investment that we've made in our children to date. They're in high school now. It was an investment not just of our, our finances, but it was an investment of our time. And I think that the, the time in a student's life between first grade and fourth grade is so important. And when most parents are just dropping their kids off and going on with their day, I had the opportunity to go to class with my children. I worked in the classroom, I was the PTA treasurer. And I, I was able to show my children that their time in school was so important that I was gonna give up one day a week to go spend it with them in class. I, I think, a- and during that time, I worked with their peers. I got to meet all their friends. I got to meet all of their friends' parents. And that network during the time that, that both of my children went through four years, the, I, I, I met close to a hundred families and I still continue relationships with those people now. It was a great opportunity. I'd like to urge the board to do whatever they can to keep the CLC program. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for having us. I just wanna say, you know, I'm obviously Jake and Sidney's mom. I'm Pam, I'm Magus. And it was a formative time for me in my life, too, not just the kids. I mean, the families that we met, I consider my go-to. They still are today. We knew those families well because we did everything together. And one of the things I, I just wanted to point out is I was listening to different speakers. One thing I noticed they talked about was how CLC set the mold and now the district, or the top of the world is adopting some of those things. If you're, if you listen to that, you'll realize that the innovation is coming out of CLC. Okay, it's not, it's not coming from the top-of-the-world portion, per se. It sounds like it's the CLC that's paving the way. They're the trailblazers. So, don't discount that. Innovation is really, really important to these kids' future. And also being able to bond, learn emotional management, and the mentor, mentee mentality with the blended classrooms is incredibly important. I'm in the business world and I understand the benefit of that. And my kids got that benefit and I'm so eternally grateful for that. So, please, please, consider CLC. Do not waste this program. You have a gem in this community. And I'll tell you, the first day of school, when Jake was a first grader, he was actually in a different classroom and I got the phone call, "Hey, we have an opening for CLC." And I'm like, you know, my son's already enrolled and they're like, well, we've got an opening. So Jake came home from class and I told him, "There's an opening at CLC." The next day, he went up to Ron Lamont and said, "Hi, my name is Jake Magus. I'm going to be in CLC." And that's, that was the beginning of our career. So, anyway, thank you for letting me share that and I hope you, you take this all into consideration. Thank you.
That, all the cards have been turned in, so I think we've covered all the speakers and thank you for all that you have shared with us. And now it's time for us as parents to be able to ask questions or for additional information as we move forward with this process. So, thank you.
What are the current class sizes for, I know you can't speak to seventeen, eighteen, but for sixteen, seventeen in one, two, three, and four? In CLC or in general?
For general population.
District-wide or specific to top of the world?
Grades one, two, three, four?
One, two, three, four.
Let's say for grades one through three, one, one person either way. For grades one through three, we're averaging about twenty-one.
Is it, we're still twenty-one?
Yes. Fourth grade is, is higher than that. It's probably averaging about twenty-five.
So, we're still small?
Okay.
When was the last time CLC was actually reviewed? Just for the beginning.
Yeah, we, um, question about when was the last time the evaluation took place was, I think it had been mentioned over the speakers. We can't find any formal. Victoria, I've read the warehouse, I went back and looked through a lot of our board agendas and a lot of it's now digital and scanned in, so we've spent a lot of time looking. We have no formal reviews that were ever technically conducted. Informally, there's not, no documents that would, that showed up either. So, we can't specifically state. I think just, just in conversations, my understanding is the evaluations essentially ceased after the first several years. Now we're for, now we're done. Now again, I, I don't know to what extent. It's back in the eighty-three on the nineties. I don't have anything that would show that it was ever formally done or reviewed.
I was born then. I was young, I was born.
No, I don't remember. I just knew that there was testing required each year for a number of years because that was the initial mandate, even though the other, the other brings didn't test every year at that point in time. That's all changed.
So, are you, are we saying that if all the CLC students were assimilated into the general education population, we still would need to hire any more teachers?
Correct. We are the next phase in our current staffing as it stands with our declining development to meet the needs of all of our students in all programs without additions. So, to hire an additional staff member, more staff members would be an initial cost to the district.
Yeah, my comment was, one of the concerns is the three-four combo. If it only turned out to be thirteen, that would be inequitable to the other class sizes we have in regular ed. So, that group would have to be assimilated for equity across other students. I mean, that's fine because you have quite a, a lot of students in the one-two combo that desire it. It's the three-four that flagged up. Because right now we only have, well, the other day it was only ten and now we're up to maybe thirteen. And I, I, I see that's a problem for equity across for the, all the regular classrooms.
One of the challenges in doing our research that came up was as it relates to equitable distribution of resources and, you know, our council and in consultation with others, that it does put us in a precarious position potentially to have an equal distribution, having class sizes of, potentially fourteen at, in one area, while the class averages in the district would be significantly different for three-four and across twenty-five to one and then roughly twenty to one in the other. So, you know, just in round numbers, it would be a significant difference in numbers. And though our language did not have specificity around what the class size average was supposed to be when it was initially accepted and it came to three, it was agreed that the class size ratios would be in line with class size ratios district-wide and all of the other programs. So, that was a stipulation that was made at the original adoption. I'm not sure because there is no language around when it moved to twenty to one. Um, I'm not sure because there is no language around when it moved to twenty to one.
And what, when the, I remember, because I was there, not at CLC, but in, and that they, when the twenty-one came down from the state, that's when CLC dropped to ten and ten, and then ten, and they still kept ten in fourth grade, even though the, the class size reduction wasn't necessarily a place for a fourth grade. That was a change from fifteen, I think. Yeah, it wasn't, it was fifteen to fifteen, and that prior to that.
At this point, I know we're really looking at social-emotional learning and it seems like CLC has done a wonderful job with that. And it has such longevity, so many people that care about it. Students that have done wonderful things coming out of there, the parent community. Can we have some options?
That's our, that will be our direction.
Our jobs, our jobs.
I think, I would be interested in seeing some options, what options could make place. If there was a change in, it might be all, one class with all grade levels, it might, I'm, I'm not saying this, so anybody can think that this is what it might be, but just as an example, it might be just one, two. The problem is we still have the issue of staffing. And unless we find someone who is willing to staff it, um, I, our, our primary, I will say, charge is fiscal responsibility. And, and frankly, to hire someone, I think, I would be compromising my integrity because I wouldn't feel that I could necessarily keep that person on. You know, if, if our enrollment drops and, and that, that could be a real factor. And I would hate to find another Leia and hire that person and then say, we don't have the numbers to keep you.
The last in, first out.
Right, yeah, it wouldn't matter. The whole district, the whole, yeah, the whole district, not just CLC, the whole district. That's where, that's, that's where, that's the sticking point, is the, is the inability to find staffing. Um, because, and I, and I, I absolutely agree with everything everyone says. Um, I mean, I've seen it with all, well, most of us were at TOW, you were a teacher there and we were parents there, so we've seen it, but I also can say to Sheri's point, I can, everything that you all said, I can say about my TOW experience and my TOW community. Um, because my, that TOW frankly is my family. I have a unique experience with no family here, um, no, um, and, and having had quite a number of really untoward things, tragedies if you wanna call them that. So although we were at TOW, and so I can say, I understand how you feel because I feel that way still and I am twenty-four years in this district. But TOW is where my heart lies. And so the feeling that you have for CLC, I have for TOW as well. So don't think that I don't understand what you are saying and, and what you are passionately desiring because I, I have that as well. My kids feel the same way. My twenty-eight, twenty-five, and twenty-year-old will tell you, TOW was where they became who they are. And I've raised really good socialists, so just gonna, just gonna throw that out there for you. So this is, this is a very, very difficult quandary we're in. And however it goes down or whatever we come up with, I don't want any of you to think that we, me, I can't speak for my fellow board members. I don't want anyone to think that whatever decision we make is done lightly or simply because of the bottom line, but we have to look at an entire picture. We have to, um, speak to what is best for LVUSD as a whole, which is K-12, or now TK, and preschool, especially is preschool. So that's, that is, um, that, that's our charge. And so I, I, I've written everything down you said. Um, but I also, I also want you to know that because I have the same feeling for TOW that you have for CLC, that, that it can happen if, if for some reason things don't, you can't work something out pers, you know, perfectly. So I would love to come to a compromise, I would love to some, somehow figure out how we can, like Jan said, either a one-four or a one-two. But we gotta find somebody who can teach it. And it's gotta be someone who gets it. Because that's the, that's the dilemma. It has to be someone who understands that it is, it's unique and yet you still, you do have to take standardized tests and we do have to do the California State Standards and there are requirements. Um, I will say that, that TOW has, and Elmore too, I mean, I, I, I speak to TOW because you know that I mean, our, our elementary schools as a whole, between the Character Counts and the Rachel's Challenge and the, you know, the, the mindfulness that both schools are doing now, there's so many parts of it.
Rocket-ready.
Rocket-ready, rocket-ready, oh my god. So, so there, it, uh, I wanna, I just, I guess what I wanna say is, don't be afraid. Don't be afraid if, if it doesn't turn out perfectly because I can speak to my family, that my family will not let you down. And I, we will, we will work mightily to come to, to a good compromise and I feel, um, for everyone. But, um, there we go, I just said too much and I'm done.
I think a lot of, a lot of the regular classroom, like Kedda said, does encompass a lot of things that CLC does. And, uh, uh, you know, depending on the teacher, how much. But looking towards a compromise because I think it is important to have an alternative. What about if it was something like Community Learning Center for STEAM and it took more kids that were interested in science and math and technology? Or, you know, CLC for the arts and, you know, you know, something because there are schools that emphasize digital.
That would, that would, that would alternative it.
That would, but then we still have.
No, in a sense, I have a teacher that really wants to teach it.
But you have to overlay that with all, and now all standards, standards, which are. I know I said that at PJ Council, it's overwhelming and what, what the standards lie now, but teachers need to be able to, since check off to ensure that it's just, it's massive. And I think that's, so we put it, and you're almost talking about a back-up to a school. I don't even know how districts pull that off. But I, I think what you're saying, or what, and the same with Kedda is, what I briefly said was if we could have some exploration of options, what options could take place other than, yeah, the, just first.
It, it'd be an option also, you know, putting it in compliance with educational laws changes since nineteen eighty. And children, you know, it's my, and I had a child in CLC and I had two children not in CLC. And so, um, I could speak to, you know, both the experiences that, um, the experiences that were right for them, but, um, as my, one of my children pointed out, but, um, to be exclusive, to be inclusive was, was a struggling concept for him. It excludes and, and my son, but he just didn't, I feel like his. But I think that hits on the different speakers we had on how, you know, how do you quality, how do you have quality for all students, so all students can have all those same experiences? And, and having been in both, it is different. Um, and it's different because the parents have a place. Um, and they have a very different place in the PTA, right? It's a different, not that it doesn't, portion, it's a different place being in class with the teachers, being in class with, um, the students and, and all of, and utilized in a systematic fashion to, you know, your place, that you sign up for something, you take that role and go into it. And I think for our community, when parents have that space with, usually elementary schools where it's applied most, but in any school, whether it's the ballroom or whether, right, whatever it's doing. I think that's what speaks to them, that's that connection, right, that place is so tight. And it is probably bound more within PJ and the community as a whole, both. But, you know, I mean, you got, you got all these little talkers that would be creative. But I think, um, what I heard in all the letters, what I heard in all the speakers is that, uh, parents having that space, having a structured space where they can give back and they can make a difference. Um, and I think a little bit came up in the L cap for parents, were different than what the teacher said. And parents didn't always feel like they had a place where teachers felt like they did. And so I think there's something for us to evaluate in that, um, and how to bring that in. Now, in order to comply, you know, you can't force people to volunteer and you can't make requirements for them to volunteer. There's all the, the fine line in that, but, um, I think from everyone speaking and being there, they are used to showing up and they're used to being there because they're trained by amazing teachers at a very young age to do that. But also you, you ended up relying upon each other for, you know, what do I do if my kid says this or does this? How did you get your kid to learn that or, right? And I think that that's part of parenthood. So I think that's what those early years give us, and it was different friends I made when my kids were in CLC or whatever.
Because I don't think, I think that, I don't think that experience is unique to somebody, that's, I think that's unique to being an elementary parent, you're in over your head, you don't know what that would do.
Right, right, in general.
Right, just be honest.
It is, it is, yes.
My comment was just, I appreciate everyone coming and speaking, I appreciated all the letters, my kids went through TOW. I think from when I read some letters from the people who were from the original CLC, I feel like that origination of it is a little different than how it's kind of trailed out today. Um, but I do think all the information in those original years, education caught up with you. Education is innovative, it's collaborative, it's project-based learning. We are seeing teachers trained in different modalities of instruction for different learners all the time. Um, I'm a teacher, I taught fourth grade, all we were constantly trained in changing and adapting to how kids learn. So I can say with confidence that our teachers in this district adapt, change, innovate, collaborate, and they're doing that with our students in every classroom, um, from K through twelve, because I have a daughter who's in twelfth grade. So I just wanna say that what we offer, our goal is never to make you feel like you're not getting what you desire because we feel like as leaders and teachers and district people here, we are always trying to serve our children and maximize their learning. And so I just wanna state that, so I respect everything you've said, but I also feel very strongly that our classrooms are excellent. So I don't know the solution because we're in a staff, staffing issue. And what a lot of you don't understand is hypothetically, if a teacher is to be hired at CLC for one-two and then we had to drop an enrollment, that teacher has to be the first one to be laid off because it's last one in, first one off. So it's a risky, can I just add, it's a risky issue. It, so it, it doesn't say that teacher's in and then we just pick someone to lay off, it's a seniority issue. We're considering that when we're thinking of it. That's, so there's many layers to it. And just so you know, I, I loved reading the letters, um, I've loved hearing all of you speak tonight, I love Top of the World, I've seen so many kids be successful from all the different programs, so I just wanna let you know that. But education has caught up with all those innovations that you guys initiated in nineteen eighty-three. So I just wanna say that, kudos to you for that.
And I think it's not just here, it is across, I can see that as far as, um, the awareness of the whole child. And we've actually been talking about that in this district for a number of years. So that we, we, I think education's improved as far as, uh, how we help students to grow and learn. But I think, I listened to you, all you guys speak, and I actually had a student go to Top of the World for one year and he, and he relate to what the passion that comes out with elementary education particularly. And I think it maybe escalates again when they get to eleventh grade. But I think, if, my oldest went to Top of the World as a sixth grade student because we didn't have a middle school yet, because Aliso was closed. And when I, when I hear Anita, remember that we held the decision-making on, on the alternate program in the theater, the meeting about closing Aliso School was also held in the theater. And I was the out-there person and then out of that ran the board, so it, but it was.
I went to Aliso School.
Yeah, that was, you know, we, as elementary terrorists, that was, at that time, we really had three distinctive neighborhood schools and we were losing our neighborhood schools, so that's, I guess, a greater concept than a family, but it still was.
No, it is your family.
And I, and I worked at a childcare center at the church next door to the Aliso School and we took a lot of students that were teachers' kids. And so it is, it's, it's, really has an impact for us with the young children. But I, I would echo what Peggy said, I really believe that our, our classrooms have grown significantly with, uh, addressing the needs of the whole child and have put many programs in this place. They are different at the two different schools, but I think that, um, we have grown in that sense. And I know, we do provide a lot of training for teachers. But I'm interested, as I said before, I'm interested in, in hearing what some of the options could be. And with the, with the, um.
To that, to that end, could.
Solution.
Flush out a few more, because I have two, I have one, basically keep it ended, I have the combo one-four and I need a few more that go back.
Sure, a one, a one-two.
And another one, I, one other.
I get, we have a staffing issue.
The other thing is that, the thing was the students talk about, the parents talk about was, um, that they stayed together, they had time there together. So even if there were teachers willing to teach combo classes in the regular general population, if they would teach a combo class, we're not changing staffing, we're not, right? And that, that obviously called all regulations.
They had a looping for, they had looping like ten years ago at, at TOW.
Yeah.
Because they haven't had it for long.
They haven't.
Yeah. But, but you've got that lottery issue too, you have the lottery issue. And I do think, I would say, I would have no problem with giving it to my grandparents if, 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 as long as it's okay with head coach.
Well, you don't have to change your board policy.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that would not be an issue, I mean, good god, I would hate that type of kids to be placed.
Yeah, we just have a complaint.
Yeah.
But, but I guess one of combos of just looking at, is there a combo? Because I think that the magical thing that, you know, I'm talking to my own kid, the magical thing was the fact that you know these kids, right, that you grow with them, you know, and it's different. You know, each class year, you're starting a different, I think it's, you know, being a teacher, right, for a longer time here and stuff like that. And, um, and I'm not saying CLC kids are more introverted or not, but it tends to attract some of them and, and I think that it's easier on the, that, that for them in developing a relationship and developing a relationship. And so I, you know, I'm not saying, oh, we're just looking for introverted kids because, or maybe they go in that way and they come out differently, but, but, um, but I think there's something in building those relationships.
But again, it's, it's.
Have a lottery situation, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally, I totally, that's what I mean, I'm not saying it's that, but I'm just, right.
Something that provides long. And then the, the other thing would be the, the numbers. I mean, if it was a one-four, would it be twenty-five kids? Would it be, I mean, that's the thing, you gotta have, you gotta have the, the, you gotta have the critical mass of something that, that is, that's equitable for us, the grade levels.
Right, so in that essence, what, uh, we wish, uh, we would really need to do is look at a class size average of all of our sites, uh, grades one through four and come up with a ratio that was equitable to.
You could justify, you just, you gotta find the ratio that you can justify.
Correct, correct. So, uh, okay, so I have a one-four, uh, I'll use it as a one-two, um, obviously without the, the other option that, that would be potential, it's not wrong, so.
And I do, but I.
Right, and in transition, I wish that it, but it's important to.
Right.
But I do think that.
Any, any other options?
No, do, it'd be you I'd come up with, I mean, if I did that.
I would be, I would be, I would be very opposed to hiring additional staff. I just couldn't with, with a clear conscience, do that to somebody, right.
What would you tie a really good parent's style, first one, twenty?
Uh, that I can't speak to, not, not on the, their end, but I, what I can say is, you know, when this was originally, um, built back in eighty-three, it was clearly articulated that in order to have the program, there needed to be sufficient volunteers. And, uh, I think that what made us so special in eighty-three was it was brought forth by teachers.
Teachers.
Uh, who, and, and a community of parents who really wanted to do this. And so that's the piece that we obviously are lacking. Um, now, uh, as has been mentioned, we're kind of in the, unfortunately, uh, this, talk about a Trump perfect storm where, you know, we have declining enrollment over the last three years. So two years ago when we hired for CLC, we were in a different staffing environment. Um, and over the next several years, we're, as both Mike and Chris can attest to, uh, we're in a declining enrollment situation. So we're, uh, close to about a hundred students less than Top of the World coming up here. So we're close to about a hundred students less of Top of the World coming up here at the next, at the end of next school year than we were two years ago when, when this was restored. So we're looking at class, total class enrollment sizes of sub-one-hundred in a couple of years in each grade level. And right now, we're at a much different number in one-third. So for every, you know, twenty-four kids that don't come, that's a whole class and or twenty at the lower levels. So we are in a predicament and I, and I do get concerned about the statement of the, kind of, I do not want to.
We're rotating.
Rotation of, kind of coming through this every year. Obviously, it would have been beneficial out of staff that were volunteered as per, you know, the, the education code requirement. But it is, this definitely kind of puts us in a predicament that we have to look at. So I'm not sure that I can bring back any options that don't have us hiring a teacher. I can bring them back as saying, you know, we can re-fly it out there. At least it would re-fly what it could potentially look like under an option. But I mean, if it's one teacher, we could say, we could re-fly it out and see if there's interest at that level. I think there is some potential interest in the larger community. Also, continue a conversation about what ultimately this is the intent around CLC. In the current day, and I think that would be something to.
Because I, Peggy is correct. When it, when it began, it's very compelling. And the letters are compelling. And it's, it's, you know, and we have grown, the, the general education program as a whole has grown. The alternative part is kind of, I guess, that's up to the parent, the parents, right? The parents are, they're the ones who had the vision originally, right, of the teacher.
Well, but they were.
I don't know how it came, I mean, like you were on the task.
How do you move it? Because I.
So how, in your comments, how does CLC move the changing times? I mean, you're, you're right.
Well, it goes back, in a sense, to the fact that the first alternative program in this district was at the high school, as I wrote in my letter.
Just came.
And that closed not for lack of student or family interest. It closed because the administration slowly took away our support. And it got to a state, instead of two teachers and an aide, it was one teacher with fifty kids. And they were able to say, oh, well, no one wants to teach K anymore. And I was the last man standing because they presented an unworkable situation. So that closed, but there was still a lot of interest in the community for alternative education. And so I don't remember how many years passed, but at some point, the community and teachers were still interested and presented to the board a, we've created an outline for K-12 alternative education. And presented that to the board for their consideration and then more and more interest grew. And then we finally got to this gigantic community meeting about will Laguna Beach invest in alternative education or not? And from there, it ended up that the most interest was at the elementary school level. And so that's how CLC happened. So I can't say it was ex-teachers and ex-parents. I just know that when K, when the high school program closed, the desire for alternative education in this community did not close. It was the administrators at the time that didn't want it. And so it's, it was just a, an interest. And it also, you know, that there was a lot more talk then in the nation about alternative schools. That was like, you know, the happening thing. And so it was, and it was, as has been said, absolutely nothing against our elementary schools. And I wrote in my letter, all four of our schools are top-notch schools. We know that. And they all do wonderful things. And you've also heard that something unique happens when you've got a smaller group, when you have a mixed age, you know, that, all that stuff. So I don't know if I can answer the question.
No, I'm, but I'm thinking there were teachers involved at the outset. Basically, that's what I was.
Oh, yes. There were teachers who.
So that's, and that's.
So that helps motivate and lead it.
Right, that's.
Running and you have a motivated parent population in elementary. That's a high motivation.
And when, when it was a high school program, there were two teachers who taught full-time. But there were teachers from the regular high school program that came over and taught a course here and a course there. So it was a collaboration, really, among the high school staff and the, and the K teachers. That probably isn't possible in an elementary situation, but I guess what I'm saying is it was a, it was a group effort.
Right, until that end, I think that, you know, the education code around alternative programs is fairly straightforward in that in order to have one, you need student interest and you need teacher interest. And without either one of those, the Ed Code actually said, you can't establish one. So you couldn't, as a district, hear from a community saying, we want something. And then, in that sense, go out and hire for it. You're, you're actually required to have a teacher volunteer to help them to pick it up. And so, you know, yeah, so if, if a teacher does not volunteer, a school board may not establish an alternative school. So the exclusion of traditional schools is essentially what the, what the rules are around that. So, you know, there's a lot of alternative programs that exist. We have models that, that, you know, in many different districts. As, as I've mentioned to Shannon in our conversations in the past, there's obviously dual-language immersion programs in Capitron Valley, the high school district. And it's near as union school district. There's a variety of programs that exist out there. What you find common in many of those is when they were established, several language we have, but have been since updated. It does have the statements of when the enrollment drops, it puts the position, you know, of a program. It must meet the same class sizes as their current counterparts, simply because I think in the current day and age, as has been pointed out by, you know, at least one speaker, you put yourself in a position where if you're inadequate in applying resources to a program, whatever. So that obviously would be a, a requirement of us to put some of the more, as you mentioned, I mean, some of the newer Ed Code requirements and case law around some of these changes that happen, to put those things into place. And if this was to continue and, and change, whatever has happened around.
So ultimately, Ed Code is going to dictate exactly what we are, what we are allowed to do.
So I think it goes back to the statements made of, like, what Ed Code, I don't have it. One of the teachers that wanted to do is, what do teachers want to do is, well, I think it was like looking for the state.
The type of options.
Where they're merging, I don't know. But what, what is that, that we might have a teacher that would be excited about? Does that align with the students and parents? Or do we have interest in that? And then you're not, you're not hiring staff. And then, you know, are there enough to fill that to make ratios? And I think that's more of what the alternative, which also is a research into it.
Well, and.
Right, you have this little window.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Actually, I watched someone running for hours, but I wouldn't. So. So I will, I, I think we have a couple of things I, I think will bring back.
And another thing, if, if we, if we have to close a program, I don't want to say all that, but I don't. What does that look like?
Yeah, I'll bring that back.
Yes.
That would be the option.
Well, he had that as a.
Yes, he had that as a.
So I essentially have four. And anything else that we may come up with? I think it would be hard to really say, we got to reinvest the program.
Initially, this lady did.
This way. But I think it could be an extension of a conversation that could continue into next year potentially. Regardless of any of these options, it could be something that we investigate as a potential. You know, again, it needs to be, you need to have both in order to make a program happen. You need to have interest and you have teachers that are willing to do it. And so we'll, we'll work through some of these options and bring them back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just glad my mic works. Oh.
I know.
Yeah. Very respectful. I think, you know, these things. I don't know. Yeah. You had to. You had to.
You misinterpreted me. Hey.
It's a conference.
Please read in vain. Yeah, it is. Like, he knows. He might go back. So you should help ours stay on. So now we're going to our actual items. And our first item is item sixteen, approval for a course study for Thirteenth Middle School and Laguna Beach High School for the twenty seventeen, twenty-eight school year publication. So thank you for your consideration. We're bringing this forward because the Ed Code requires that we bring our list of courses to you annually. This is six through twelve. Curriculum Council has approved new courses. And, and our staff makes recommendations for it to the council. So as you look through the list, you'll see new additions are marked. They, I, there is one error though, and I do apologize. Page ninety, ninety-four should be marked for Science Six because it is not a new course title, but there is new content in that. So I'm integrated.
Okay, so does it?
So I apologize for that.
There should be, it's right there. Seven, eight will come the next year, so I.
That's correct. We'll roll it in.
Do you call this comment on this item?
So I color-coded one a lot. The, the question after I color-coded or anything, we're, we're coming on. Is that, is that, is that social studies? The the question after I've color coded or anything for our comment on it is that is that um is that social studies didn't have an honor program? Very like all the other groups had honor program, they didn't have AP.
AP.
AP. But although the ones that AP too, there's just the only discrepancy. I was just looking at all of it and the answer to my questions, you know, it's all original. Well, I was looking at this, I was like, well, I don't comment if I didn't have.
Would they have AP or A?
AP.
Yes.
What she pointed out is that in terms of programming, like English for example is a modern.
Oh, modern English.
How to come in and then directly. They said no, I agree with something. I'm just looking at how we're servicing all of it, right? I just noticed.
I guess you can blow it. Do they know they have a new AP work history, I guess, because they do.
We have APRO, we have APUS and each one AP uh just government and sports like but um.
Right, no, no.
I just know where that whole, where they're saying that it doesn't, they don't have.
Nice uh uh GSS.
Oh, that GSS.
Correct, right.
Good thing. Well, I'm thrilled. I'm excited. I color coded also, that's not really um. I love the AP, I love it. We've cast the statistics, I think it's brilliant. Like they're even the Chinese word, I love your science and then I'm all over that integrated six, thank you.
Are there any classes that are not being offered?
I didn't see that on here.
That were offered this year, but. No, no, these are um this is our current, these are current classes that we have that we're bringing forward. Um, we need to keep them on the list even if we don't offer them out in for future years because there are students that will need to have it reported on their.
Okay.
On their transcripts.
But that Paus was not premium or whatever. What are what is that class called?
Your leadership.
Your leadership.
Maybe the top.
Your leadership at Thurston.
Yeah.
Well, these are again, as she pointed out, these are potential course offerings. So and also courses that we've offered in the past. So if we are to delete courses that students have on their transcripts, because they took them as a ninth grader and they're now seniors and we were to say we're deleting that from our course of study. We would delete the course out of our record, which would delete it off their transcript. So we leave courses on until such time as no students have this on their transcript. If we make a change to close the class, for example, we will keep it on there until such time as we should have students roll. Again, it goes back to we want to be accurate and reflect that our course of study encompasses for the four years of the students in high school, that that's what they're being given. So they don't make any changes. Similar to what you might find in uh times at a college level, when you get their course of study. You hang on to that as a as an incoming student because they change things over time, you're all, you know, you're meant to need that course to study your requirement. So we keep it, we will keep it updated. So this is the first time for us kind of bringing it to the board for your Google, which is um. There's much more detail if you go into the course catalog and what these courses actually are. But this is uh really just a truncated version of just what we could potentially offer or what we have offered for us.
Okay, so we might not offer all the.
Not that we got it.
Enrollment.
Right, it it that's yeah, good point, Shannon, is that we also have to deal with uh enrollment changes, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and uh as classes become, as we go for UC eligibility for some of our classes, we will also bring that back and, you know, update that sheet accordingly. So we could have some that will be under the UC going forward. People are still continuing to write things for some of our courses. Um, but uh if you see some of the new ones that stood out to us, um, which is great to see, the AP for science principles. Uh, there's a large number of students interested at high schools, hundreds sixty plus students, which is great. Um, so uh I found the need and then by a teacher, now we got.
So if there's possibly sixty students, that means we might have two section.
Yes.
Complaining.
Right.
Um, and then sometime we'll talk about the number of modified classes and the number of support classes.
So they're currently left in, yeah, so they're currently left in the schedule. Obviously, we continue to look at those. Um, and I can say that uh this uh white has met and started talking um about our intervention courses specifically on high school. And we'll um she got a group meet, we're gonna, she has a follow up meeting, she's getting ready to plan, again determining what are we doing intervention wise for our students. And not just a, there's a course title attached to that, it's more about what's the need, I mean, what's the product, what kind of medicine we're gonna provide that to specifically, right?
The how we. Yeah, how we mean.
So um that was an ongoing conversation. So regardless of the course title that's in here, that is potentially all, it will be all compared to that.
Okay.
Okay.
And could a student ever take, would they, I get that if they take the support class and then they could take the core class or the basic class, if if they're taking the support class, what, I don't know the difference, I don't know basic.
Do you wanna ask the basic question?
Sure, so.
Of course, it's my question, my question.
Sure, so um are students that are um mild, that um would be on IEPs are in basic courses?
Okay.
Support is for general population.
Okay. So there we go, support for the core class.
Depending on the student's IEP, these courses exist to meet the needs of uh the modified would be a non.
Right.
And the modify.
Modified would be a non traditional, non graduate, students getting non high school home, but some type of completion um in those cases.
So is it kind of like basics?
No, basic is would be different, basic would be more kind of a heavily accommodated.
Next.
So again, all driven by IEP team, um, this is really a new students.
And our support's driven by IEP as well, or is that just just exam?
That's correct. Some, we have some uh students, some ELP students, some non specialized, some private four students that are getting involved in some of the support classes, support classes are maybe.
That basically is where they end up with two sections with the same.
So that's why our losers are.
Correct.
Now, are the four academic skills taught by somebody who's versed in all the four subjects? So they kind of have a math expertise and a language architecture expertise?
In the, we've had uh three different teachers currently teaching the core classes at the high school in particular. Um, and uh each one brings a kind of a different area of kind of level of expertise and and specific focus. Uh, but that's exactly what we're evaluating this next year, going into next year. What is the need and who has the skill set to meet that need as as teachers that we have? So that's I think it's charged right now, is to work through and identify where are the different intervention needs and ensure that we put classes and students in those things specifically. Right now, it's still nine, ten, eleven, twelve, but if they go in by grade level, that's not necessarily based on.
Right, right.
So that's what we're currently looking at. So I can't tell you who's gonna teach it next year, we haven't done the schedule at the high school yet.
Mm-hmm.
But it's sure that's something I mean, so working hard to.
Right.
So.
Making it like that, to identify every person.
Sometimes, sometimes, yeah. It's not always, many times it is a council recommendation. Sometimes it could be a variety of things where a student comes in and just at the tenth grade level, suddenly isn't doing very well and and depending on the need, again, that's what we're looking for.
And do you know, cause like, no, but that's why, thanks for all the added, for the added classes and so, and then I also just wanna say for the uh two new. Additions to.
Our next item, um approval of curriculum content year recommendation for textbook adoption for English Language Arts, English Language Development Framework, promoting twenty seventeen twenty eighteen school year. And our staff is way ahead so long time, thank you.
So present and bickers and workers so pleased tonight um that some of our teachers have joined us. This has been an extraordinary process with them. I'd like to thank Justin and Yadi for leading our teachers through this process. One thing to note is it's uh the the state recommends K eight programs, our high school even hopped on and is uh had piloted, they've, we've done a really exciting job. So quickly, here are the things we're gonna talk through. A reminder, here are the the major shifts that we did, remember Finney's age, we split the room, talked about him a little bit. Those are the main ideas that we talked about. There are five programs. We are look, we looked at three. So program one, we did not even consider because it did not include um and a write up for how we support English learners. We have English learners and we did not want to consider it. So program two is a better option for us, it's our core. But it also folds nicely and integrated designated. Program four is for students that are English only, but yet two or more years behind grade level. And program five is designated supports for ELD learners, for those who are LTS, long term English learners. There's a plethora of research around um students that struggle in that particular area that include dropout. So we wanted to make sure that we shore up all programs. So we spent a lot of time, we looked at all of these programs here. Justin's gonna walk us through uh our teachers feedback on those processes. So thank you, Justin.
Great, thank you. I'd just like to thank our elementary teachers, cuz they're way past their bedtime. Thank you very much, Nicole Stewart and Kimberly Maxson. Um, and as you can see, they piloted just about every program they could get their hands on. Um, our secondary uh teachers piloted Study Sync, Collections, My Perspectives. For program four, we looked at Read One Eighty Universal, I Lit and Language Live. And for program five, we looked at I Lit um and Escalante. Um, our recommendation process that leads us here this evening, um, started back in twenty fifteen. Um, we had a group of teachers attend the ELA ELD framework rollout. Um, and from there, um, we also uh learned some evaluation tools in the CIST toolkit. Um, and then attended a series of three trainings on ELD best practices. From there, we used and applied that CIST toolkit evaluation uh tools and that series um at the publisher's fair and identifying um the programs that we were gonna pilot. Um, we had to um, you know, undergo uh publishers training in order to implement those programs. Um, which was followed by six to eight weeks of instructional cycles uh per program. Um, and then that followed uh with uh teacher rating surveys in order to bring a recommendation to the curriculum uh council and then here tonight. So I'm gonna go through um the program recommendations from the council and just kind of go through them sequentially. I'm starting with program two and as as you recall, that's uh core curriculum for all students. It's ELA with integrated and designated ELD instruction. So the feedback from the recommendation that I present to you tonight is from the program of wonders. And the teacher feedback indicated that it was well aligned to the standards. Um, it had the best foundational reading skills instruction. And that both designated ELD and intervention programs uh tied in uh very nicely with um academic instruction inside the classroom. And that it had a very strong assessment system in its smart start. And so the K five recommendation that I uh present to you tonight is uh wonders from the program. The Thurston team uh recommended Study Sync and basically found that it was not only uh. The content was not only relevant due to its contemporary articles and subject matter, but also very rigorous, yet accessible to students because of its high quality design. Um, and they found that uh there it was also filled with wide, a wide variety of high quality resources. So it's my pleasure to uh share with you the recommendation from the council, which is Study Sync for grades six through eight. Um, the recommendation from the high school for your consideration this evening is also Study Sync. Um, uh John Hidderson wasn't able to be with us tonight, but um he was kind of the voice for their committee and uh. Stated that it had very strong uh closed reading activities, was well designed and students uh preferred its organizational structure. Um, so it's with great pleasure that we recommend Study Sync for grades nineteen twelve for program two. That leads us to program four, and as you recall, program four is an intensive intervention designed for students who are two or more years below grade level. And the recommendation for your consideration this evening uh for grades four through eight is Read One Eighty Universal. Read One Eighty Universal, um, one of the greatest things about that is the student excitement and the buy in. When the new materials came in, they were um really engaged by it. Teachers uh reported that it improved both listening and reading comprehension. And that the students accelerated progress, made them more prepared for core instruction when they were reintegrated. Um, the recommendation this evening from the curriculum council is for grades nine through twelve is I Lit. Uh, and I'll get into some of the teacher feedback and program five, because it's also program four and five, it's both programs. So again, um, it's my pleasure to recommend for grades four through eight, Read One Eighty Universal and for grades nine through twelve, I Lit for program four. So that leads us to program five, which is specialized specialized designated ELD instruction for grades four through twelve. Um, and as you recall, it's for students who are at risk or are already designated, it's long term English learners. So the recommendation for your consideration this evening is I Lit. Um, some of the feedback we had from the teachers was that it had a very large library of high interest materials. That the uh materials were also adaptive and highly engaging for students. And that the data was immediately accessible and forms that made um next steps in instruction um very attainable for teachers. So uh the recommendation for program five for grades four through twelve is I Lit. That leads us to questions. What questions might you have for us tonight?
Are we currently using Read One Eighty?
We are currently, we were using Read One Eighty Next Gen. And so Read One Eighty Universal is the next iteration of that program.
Of Next Gen?
So.
Yeah. I so, so I mean, obviously, it's a good book.
I took some time to look at the books, they looked exciting, they looked like fun. I just um was wondering, not an exact percentage, but are there a number of the selections that align with social studies and science as far as? The curriculum? So you can kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Well, I can definitely speak to elementary. Would any of our elementary teachers like to respond to that?
Um, I'll definitely respond to that. So with the elementary school curriculum, um, each unit has a theme. And then the themes are based on science or social studies standards, and so they go along with it.
Oh, they all relate to the science issue, do they?
Yeah, so um they don't always have both, but they'll either have a science base or a social studies base. And then sometimes they have both integrated.
Okay.
Um, so sometimes they able to um have maybe like at the beginning of the year, the citizenship skills.
Mm-hmm.
And those kind of beginning year social studies skills.
Mm-hmm.
As well as a science focus. It just depends on the unit, but that's a big consideration that we looked at for all the programs, making sure that they align with social studies and science. So that we can make sure kids get as much of that as possible.
Perfect, great. And Study Sync, well, that's what I, that's what, that's what I saw you using in the classroom, right?
Yes.
Uh.
Oh, to come up here.
Well, we want you on camera.
And that, oh god, amen. So, so that's the thing that 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 then the students can find with interest in a summary and then it works to their level.
So I I did that activity with it, but what Study Sync has is a lot of nonfiction literature.
Oh.
That um does align with a lot of what social studies does and some science. It also um has links to real world articles at the moment current as well, so it's very global.
Oh, nice.
It does, and then it also has of course fiction literature in there.
Okay.
To connect with everything. Okay.
I also noticed that you're gonna have the first in service before the summer, is that right?
Which I.
Which I think is great, because I know as a teacher, I always love to get a little book for the summer and that my mind would be working on.
We do, we do have a great um great span appropriate training for each level. So we have Study Sync, uh wonders and some trainings that are scheduled for summer.
Any other questions? So do you have a public comment on this?
No, not.
Is it an idea promotion for school? Is there any further discussion? All favorites.
Hi.
Those praise my vote. Seems like you've put an awful lot of this this time.
Good job.
Really, and I know it's been on display for a long time, so I really appreciate that and the thoroughness is evident. Thanks for chatting.
Thanks for piloting everything, it's great.
So to that end, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for releasing the entire crew over there.
You need some sleep.
They all need to go.
You need to go to bed.
Thank you.
Kathy, you're excuse.
Kathy, we love this all drive.
All right, I've got.
Thank you.
Actually, I've been in school of the five to twenty fifteen twenty eighteen school year calendar. Do you miss this?
So um as we've mentioned, uh we originally approved, this is a two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar. Um, which has followed our our past practice in terms of the calendar. We agreed to, we had agreed to pilot an earlier spring break here. So you'll notice on this uh particular calendar, the spring break falls um the second week of April, which is two weeks earlier than where Easter falls, which is our typical practice to have it.
Oh, so.
So what that does is. So what that does is it breaks up the the sessions in that second semester so that they're evenly spaced. You have six weeks of instruction in between the beginning, when the students come back, and mid winter break, and then another six weeks until the spring break. And then you have a longer chunk till the end of the year.
Ten days.
But no other changes. That's the magic.
Motion, so what, say. All in favor?
Aye.
We can't say we're in favor.
Oh, you can't.
Our next item is.
Let you play the rotations accordingly.
Approval of resolution seventeen oh eight designation of representative and alternate for Western Orange County workers' compensation, joint power and authority.
Alright, so um we are, we serve um as, we assign a member of our staff to serve on the board of that J P A, and currently that is me. But in the event that I cannot make a meeting, because we're only a consortium of four districts, it's really important that we have representation. So this would designate Jeff as the alternate, lucky Jeff, and um so he would attend a meeting if I couldn't, and he'd be able to, this allows him to vote on matters related to workers' compensation.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote. Our next um action item is approval of resolution seventeen dash oh nine layoff of classified employees.
So as you know, we've uh looked to reorganize the work of the business services division, and in looking at that, um we have three board items kind of in a row here. The first of which would be to eliminate the position of director fiscal services due to that reorganization of the department, which results in a lack of work. And we conduct layoffs for two reasons, either lack of work or lack of fun. So in this case, it's lack of work.
Motion. I don't know, take your pick.
That's right, we we'll be like, I don't know, we'll see what happens. We have like options here.
In discussion, please. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote. Uh, next action item is uh approval of reclassified staff accountant by the industry.
So along with that reorganization, um this is a current position that we have, um currently titled staff accountant. It is considered part of the management bargaining unit. However, in revisiting the description of the position, it doesn't supervise employees, so we felt that it was more appropriately classified as confidential, given that the position does create reports for us for bargaining um and has access to that um confidential negotiations information. So it's important that they remain not part of a bargaining unit. Um, but uh they don't supervise employees, so they really don't need to be considered management. But along with this, you'll see most of the duties aligned toward um budget type duties, because in the next item, we have another position that would deal with more financial, not financial.
Thank you. Any discussion? Just a quote, I know it's not supposed to be a name with the job, except that I know what's who's doing, is this right?
This is right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote. Uh, next action item is approval of job description, financial analyst.
So this would be the new position that would be uh created to work alongside, right? Um, and so it'd be classified in the exact same way. It's a confidential position that again has information that relates to negotiations. Um, and works, they'll be working together, they'll be cross training, um and it allows us better internal controls to make sure that we have someone able to do that important work when and others away. It allows them to actually take time off.
Question?
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote. Our next item is uh approval of independent contract agreement with California School Fiscal Services to provide fiscal consulting services, but then not exceed the amount of ten thousand dollars.
No, that's all you.
Put your names on here.
We're still uh short staffed in business services, and we did just hire our new uh payroll specialist, but as we approached close of the school year and budget development, it's a really big crunch time for us. So in order to kind of gap us through this reorganization transition period, we estimated about eighty hours worth of work could be used by a house side consultant to um if not anything else, help give us a second set of eyes to make sure that we're following everything in accordance with our audit guideline requirements. As a result, we've reached out to a few different firms. I'm very familiar with this firm, um and their owner, Julie Chu, Jody Lu, sorry. Um, and this was by far the lowest hourly rate and most comprehensive available services. So though we may not use any of it, at least it gives us a cushion and protection to make sure we get through this year and close in culture.
So it's more as needed. Some of, thank you, check, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote. Next is our people agreement F C one S D two twelve, line between Orange County Children and Families Commission and the Middle Beach Unified for the provision of services of the local school readiness initiative for the term of July one, twenty seventeen, June thirty, twenty twenty.
Yes, so this is just a renewal. We we started way back in October two thousand. Um, but this does provide essential services for our zero to five year students.
Any questions? Motion?
Someone?
Any discussion? I just think we really get a lot of this, Alicia. I think you're very correct on that, and I'm glad that we've been able to do so and continue. Great.
I see the department of libraries, and I went stopped in the day and said, there's just so many questions, and that's, you know, they have a young age, but really beneficial.
Okay.
Aye.
It's hard to know.
She kind of had a whisper in a second. She just.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, here is my vote and. Okay, so we have, what did I have that different? Yes, that's right. I just have to grab them. So I used to roll up, sorry. Alright, this is the time for formative requests. I think it's the meeting's request for information, general comments.
This can do.
I had something pass through my mind when I'm thinking dinner, and I told you guys, so I'll remember it.
Next time.
Yes.
I just really wanted to thank Jason for including the handle of research from Handel Hall, who's on the theorem all, but I I really appreciate having you. And I'm glad that we're from the teachers, going to look at the else and have a good day.
I just wanted to say, we're using the Elmore, we're having those for a time again. I can take the stock for you just by saying too much stuff, but yeah, I just like that. And the dance concert.
The dance concert is great.
Well, that's a D's comment about uh just the kind of survey. And what was approved tonight was our uh future director of social motion support.
Exactly.
Um, so we look forward to getting him on board as soon as possible. Obviously, we I believe he's contracted through uh June thirty of the current district. Um, but uh he will be joining us as as much as possible. Um, and hopefully, as we get our hiring process going for our social services and working with that handle of information and say, okay, so what, how do we continue this conversation?
Just looking at the L cap, he's got a ton of.
There's there's plenty of plenty of work to be done.
And the need the need is just from dramatically, and I think when you got to set tragedy down in San Diego. I mean, as the the comment that a fellow student made about distresses, and it's just, and the fact that having, trying to reduce that stigma is huge.
So thank you.
And we've we've invited him to come to the May third board meeting, so that.
Oh, wonderful.
Another one of the concerts technically, because Strings did play the Montal, but on May twenty second, Jazz is gonna have a little jazz concert. Um, because they have so much they can play. Like they have the ticket just at the time they have heard the concert on the May twenty second, they're gonna have a concert.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Still no.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.